Roll call trustees attending remotely, I would like to verify your presence, please turn your cameras on trustee Kelly.
Are you there?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, thank you trustee Deepu, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Trustee McGuire, are you there?
Yep, hi, everybody.
Thank you, call to order, good evening, everyone, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, a very warm welcome to our guests in the boardroom and and those watching online as well, please note that this meeting is being live streamed and will also be posted on the board's YouTube channel, trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in teams to be automatically placed in queue and trustees, please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak, also, please remember that if you speak when you're not recognized or when you do not have the floor, your mics will be muted, land acknowledgement, opening prayer, the Our Father, National Anthem, we have trustee Chua, who was actually allocated trustee Chua, are you online? Allow our staff to to proceed with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunehs.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding you greatly.
Are steeped in Indigenous history.
As together today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our Indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledged thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you, since trustee Chua is not here, Director Klein, could you please lead us the opening prayer, the Our Father, National Anthem?
Thank you Chair. Today is March nineteenth and is the Feast Day of Saint Joseph, Saint Joseph is a patron of many things, he is the patron of our country, he is the patron of workers, he's the patron of those of us who are fortunate and blessed enough to be fathers and and so we honor him with a prayer that came in two thousand and twenty and that was a year that was dedicated for Saint Joseph and this prayer was one that was written by Pope Francis himself, name of the Father and of the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Hail Guardian of the Redeemer, spouse of the Blessed Virgin Mary, to you, God entrusted his only son, in you Mary placed her trust, with you Christ became man, blessed Joseph to us too, show yourself a father and guide us in the path of life, obtain for us grace, mercy and courage and defend us from every evil. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as is in heaven, give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not in temptation but deliver us from evil. Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you Director Klein, item one point two motions arising from in camera, there were no motions from the in camera session that will require a vote in the public session. We our next order of business is the approval of the agenda, can we have the agenda kids up there, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda and do any items need to be removed from the consent agenda? I see no other hands up, so I shall take this to a recorded vote, may I have somebody move that the agenda be approved, looking for a mover please?
I'll move it.
But trustee O'Hearn Chanada, looking for a second please?
I can second it.
Vice Chair Agnew, seconds, I shall take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote?
Favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chanada?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee Carrabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstentions, motion carries, the agenda is approved. Item number three is declarations of conflict of interest, are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we shall move on to our next order of business, which is presentations, item four point one senior staff updates, Director Klein, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to call up Sita Jayaraman, who's our Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity and her team to present this to the trustees and I think it's a great opportunity for us to celebrate and become more deeply aware of the work that's done by all our staff to further the cause of human rights and equity, which is really a cause of liberation and a cause of becoming, that is something that is a part of the gospel message and a part of what we do here at the school board, so without further ado, I'll turn it over to this one.
Thank you Director Klein and through you Mr. Chair, we're really pleased to be able to provide an update on the work of the Office of Human Rights and Equity, what we're going to be presenting today is sort of a mid-year snapshot overview of some of the work that we've done and I'm really happy that my colleagues are here, Sari Agamiri and Taliba Howard, who lead this work along with me and so what I wanted to also say that when we're presenting this work, I want to provide the context that this is the work that where the Office of Human Rights and Equity has been either playing sort of the the lead role or has retaken the lead or has played a significant role in the work, but I do want to acknowledge that we know that the work of Human Rights and Equity is not siloed in the Office of Human Rights and Equity, so there's amazing incredible working work happening across the board in different departments, so when I look around and see my colleagues here, whether it's in special education or curriculum or human resources services, student success, our leadership, there's amazing work happening, we haven't included those, not because they're not important, because we only have ten minutes to share, so we wanted to present the work that we have been sort of playing a front and center role in, Elizabeth, can you please flip us to the next slide? Thank you, so as we were thinking about how we're going to present the work today, we wanted to put it into two main themes or categories, the first is the work of building systems capacity, so the work that we've done to build the capacity of the system to advance the work of human rights and equity and the other, if you would think about it as a big category, is the work we've done to prevent harm and restore dignity, so the examples that we're going to be presenting will be under these two big themes, so next slide please, I'd like to start this off, like I said, with the building systems capacity piece and with that, here's a snapshot of again, from about late August to mid February, the work that's happened, as you can see, we held or we offered a total of thirty-two different training and you know opportunities for capacity building, the majority of which were in person and some were virtual and the total number of participants engaged through these thirty-two trainings was about a hun- one thousand four hundred and forty-four, the majority of which were staff and I want to clarify that when we're saying one thousand one hundred and sixty-two staff participants, it's not individual heads, because some staff have taken part in multiple sessions, so we're taking the count of the number of participants that engaged in all of these thirty-two sessions, but when it comes to two hundred and seventy-six students, indeed, there were two hundred and seventy-six students across the system that we've been able to engage through different sessions and trustees were also involved in some of the capacity building sessions that we've offered, we've had varied focus, last count about seventeen different areas in which we've sort of offered these thirty-two trainings, but to give you a big picture idea, it's focused on human rights and act uh human rights and accommodations and roles and responsibilities and anti-black racism and you know how to respond to incidents of hate or bias and preventing harassment and so on and so forth, so there's a whole range of topics, it just gives you a sense of some of the areas that we focused on and we also wanted to mention that there were ten very intentional and intense cross department collaborations, again, often with curriculum services, special education, student success, you know, research, communications and a host of others, because we know that this work cannot be done in isolation, so we've really tried to be intentional as we move the work forward and with that, I'm going to hand over to Sari.
Next slide please. Um so one of those initiatives that that we did as part of building systems capacity was it was around last year, around same time that the this data provided to us by the student census showcased a need for a cross departmental collaboration to center students with disabilities, the disparity in data particularly highlighted that need and so to kind of figure out what should we do, we approached, we reached out to a special education department, reached out to the curriculum department and then we started conversations with students with both hidden disabilities and visible disabilities and those conversations really highlighted the four themes that you see here, the need for representation, stigma and attitude, you know, barriers, inclusion and building community and accessibility and another message that students gave us was that we need to focus big picture on deepening the systems understanding, starting with the staff and then moving to students and so then we started conversations with the staff who had expertise on that matter, we started conversations with Human Rights and Equity Advisory Council, we started conversations with ENI Steering Committee and the Chair of CAC and then with help of these stakeholders, we developed a training that was that was focused on these four themes and offered to all admin on the Joint Administrator Administrators Meeting on February twenty-ninth and then after that, our next step is to record that training and then to be able to offer it to the entire system on the April eighth PA day and then ask all the schools to take that learning and tie that with other resources that have been offered to them such as the equity assessment tool and use that into creating their student achievement planning, if we can go to the next slide. And another initiative that I just referred to was the equity assessment tool, this is not a new resource, the the resource had existed in the system for a few years, it was previously called Equity Walk Tool and then what we did this year was taking another closer look at it to making sure that the tool itself is inclusive of all the equity deserving groups, it does focus on promoting inclusion for all of them and in both panels, that took months of work, again, very close collaborations between us, a curriculum, a special education department with help of research and truly it was a very like every all hands on deck collaboration to to revise this tool, the tool has multiple sections trying, we have tried to cover all dimensions of the school's experience for all the students in two panels and then it can be both used as a tool to promote equity and inclusion for all the students and also to measure progress, so what what we have done is that in each section or in each dimension, we have offered indicators that are signs of equity and inclusion for for students and then provided evidence that both the school team can work to prepare in their school and also use them to measure their progress.
Over to you.
Thanks so much, as we're talking about building systems capacity, one of the things that we wanted to focus on was broadening the understanding of Black History Month as a celebration, a lot of the time, the feedback that we hear is we don't want to see things from a deficit lens, we don't want to see things just highlighting the negative things or the the kind of harsh histories, the harsh harsh truths, we decided that this should be a celebratory month that focuses on the identities, experiences and the very varied backgrounds of Black Canadians, so we decided to create a series of themes that we're going to be doing henceforth, this past February, we decided to, in consultation with varying Black student unions or associations as well as the Black Staff Advisory, we decided to make African Systems of Knowledge the theme of the year and one of the really amazing things that happened this past February was the Black Excellence Symposium where over two hundred and fifty students who are a part of Black students unions and associations in secondary schools across HCSB were able to attend and kind of interact with ten different workshops, which focused on a variety of things, it focused on hair care, it focused on STEM specific and STEAM specific subjects as well as activities, as well as various learning opportunities and and pathways, we also had representation from different community partners that we consistently engage with, as well as representation from McMaster from the path pathway perspective to give students an understanding of what they can do with their future, in addition to the symposium, we also had a variety of schools doing and scheduling different activities, speaking engagements, as well as just amazing opportunities for students to in a fulsome way engage with Black History Month in a super positive light, next slide please. Another thing that we initiative that we are taking on in collaboration with the Special Education Department as well as in collaboration with Roots Community Services is the Ujima Circle of Care, now this program is a pilot drop-in program that again, we did in collaboration with our community partner, this particular space is for Black identifying students who are in Milton in grades through six through eight, as we wanted to give them an opportunity to consistently build community with each other, as well as to engage in activities, receive resources that promote both individual and collective healing and as we've been able to do a couple of sessions already, one of the cool things that we've realized is that it's one thing to be able to, you know, get together and have a good time, have a fulsome time with folks that are already in your school, but to be able to engage with students from other schools across HCSB or specifically Milton, it's really amazing to watch them kind of create those relationships and to see them looking forward to seeing one another in the following sessions or to anticipate seeing each other once more or as the the Circle of Care Program continues and I do have to mention that we kind of base this language, the idea of Ujima around a principle of Kwanzaa which talk which speaks to collective responsibility and engaging with community to be able to reach a shared collective goal, next slide please. Another one of the initiatives in which we embarked or on which we embarked, excuse me, was the campaign against the use of the N-word, unfortunately, we noted and realized that based on the Procedure VI one oh two twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three year-end report, we recognized that there were a variety of students who were impacted based on varying parts of their identity, we did mention disability being one and the training was partially a response to that in addition to what students were saying that they wanted, this was another, it spoke to our response to instances of anti-black racism that we saw happening in schools and we really just wanted to reinforce the idea that the Lord requires for us to do justice, to love kindness and you know walk humbly with him in addition to you know, understanding that every human being has dignity and we're not reinforcing dignity if we are saying words that removes and strips other human beings of their dignity, so we aren't just creating space to celebrate, we're not just creating opportunities for folks to learn about Black Canadians, but we're also reinforcing the idea that everybody deserves the opportunity to live fully in their human human, you know, likeness in ways that they're not being called negative words with with harsh history. Next slide please.
Thank you and that sort of wraps up some of the initiatives that we wanted to highlight, we're also really pleased to share with you that we have just today, hot off the press, released our second newsletter of this year, so this is the fourth since we started publishing our newsletters and this is the second for this year and you can use the QR code and I know that communications have been speedy enough to upload it today already on the website and that contains more information about the work that we've been doing and highlights some of the work, so thank you, thank you for the opportunity to share some of this with you and.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman and your team, I shall now open up the floor to trustees for questions, trustees, do we have questions, I see trustee Murphy, you have a hand up, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you, thank you for the presentation, as I was listening, you mentioned in the building systems capacity portion of your presentation that you have indicators of equity and inclusion and I'm wondering if you could provide some examples and are the teachers aware of these indicators and how are they tracked?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, so so the this is with reference to the assessment tool itself, so the tool itself has five different segments and I can start this off and perhaps Sari would like to add to that, it has five segment segments, so for example, you know, in the library, if you walk into the library, what does inclusion look like, what does it look like in terms of, you know, what are the posters on the walls, you know, how how are even different scenes depicted that reflect our students, you know, how is the space welcoming of all kinds of students and their identities, so these are some of the indicators that we've then added to say, what kind of books, who's which authors do you have, how do you make sure that everybody can see themselves reflected in the curriculum, that's one example, but there are other examples in terms of the hallways, when you walk, what does that look like, the classrooms, what does that look like, but the idea is always to make sure that all our students can see themselves reflected, so then they can all thrive and and succeed and like I said, this tool went through extensive consultation with curriculum department folks, with numerous other folks to make sure that it really met all and we also spoke with administrators who are part of our different committees to talk about, you know, are we giving examples that are live and relatable to the schools and then the idea was for administrators to then take it and form a committee and use that as a way to literally walk around the school, take an inventory and then see how they can make themselves, how could they can make the school environment more inclusive, would you like to add anything to that?
Um yeah, just to that portion of your question, that how that how this has been made accessible to staff, so the tool was presented at a joint admin- joint administrators meeting, I think on December fourteenth and then after that, it was circulated throughout the system by a memo and then we've also been having multiple conversations with curriculum consultants and to making sure that they are equipped to have those conversations with their family of the schools as part of the student achievement planning, the goal settings and all that they do, so ensuring that staff are supported in using the tool and it that is integrated into different processes.
Thank you, trustee Murphy, you have a follow-up?
No, that's great.
Thank you, up next trustee Carrabella, you have your hand up, you're the floor.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, I have a follow-up on on the on this the assessment tool, so is it is it paper-based or computer-based, like someone goes through and who is that someone that goes through that does the assessment?
Um so.
Ms. Chairman or your team?
Uh thank you and through you and I can start us off again and then you can continue is that there is a digital version, because some people prefer to work with laptops or iPads, so there is a digital version, but those who prefer hard copy can also have a hard copy and again, the idea is that the school principal or VP is involved and strikes up a committee, so it could be of staff, maybe a teacher, maybe a library staff, maybe a social worker, some students and you know, there's also an option to involve parents to like I said, to form that team that can look at that tool and say, okay, so these are some of the examples in which schools can be more inclusive, which of these are present in our school, what's the inventory, where can we perhaps enhance that, so it's not a one size fit formula for everybody, because we recognize that every school community is different, which is why we've left it to the school administrator and the staff and student team that they will put together to look around to see what is most relevant, who are the most, you know, the students that don't see themselves reflected and how and how do we make sure that those gaps are filled?
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have a follow-up? Thank you. Any other trustees have questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Chairman and your team, for presenting the media snapshot of the great work being done, the Human Rights and Equity Office across our system. Please keep up the good work. We look forward to the year-end update. Thank you so much. We move on to the next item is delegations. We have no delegations today. Next order of business is consent agenda items. The following items have been agreed upon. At the agenda approval, just stay on the consent agenda. We have one action item and we have several noted items. The consent agenda, there will be a single motion for the action item, and there will be no discussion. There will be no discussion on the noted items as well. Trustees have received an update on the correspondence just before the meeting. So the, so I shall now read the motion. Result that the Holton Catholic District School Board approved the consent agenda item 6.1.1 on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, as submitted. May I have a mover, please? Goodbye, Vice Chair Agnew. Looking for a second, please. Second by Trustee Powell. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Huan Chanara?
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Motion carries. We shall skip over approval of the minutes. Business arising, and we shall move on to item number nine, which is our next order of business, action items. Before we proceed with action items, I will review the rules for everyone's benefit. We have one action item today. The sponsoring trustee will have five minutes to speak to the motion. Trustees, and then open up discussion. Trustees will have three minutes to ask questions from the presenter for clarification purposes or staff. There will be no debate during this time. There will be no amendments during this time. We will then open up debate for three minutes, and then trustees will have three minutes to debate. And then after that, we shall, before I do that, let me just locate my timer here, and give me a second.
Mr. Chair?
Sorry, Trustee Carabella, I heard you. One second. Trustee Carabella, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to put a motion to suspend that bylaw, 10.4, for open and closed debate on the main motion to suspend it, to...
So I think, Trustee Carabella, can we put the motion on the table first, move and second it, and then?
Is that okay?
I think that's a better, better opportunity. So when we start the question period, I would say when you start a question period at that point in time, because till that point in time, I heard the trustees want some more time there too. So I, I'll let you know exactly, okay? So we can do that. So at the moment, Trustee Murphy, I'll hand the floor to you. Please read the motion. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Thruu. So the notice of motion is to keep ENG 3U-C-E for Grade 11 students at the HCSB, whereas the Ministry of Education has developed Grade 11 English curricular courses entitled "English: Understanding Contemporary First Nations Métis and Inuit Voices" and BE 3U-C-E to be offered as an alternative course to ENG 3 for Grade 11 students and have not made them compulsory. And whereas the Holton Catholic District School Board has been offering NBE as an alternative and only piloted compulsory NBE among four secondary schools during the 2023-2024 school year for some pathways of Grade 11 students and all pathways at one secondary school. And whereas preserving student choice in academic courses contributes to fostering overall student autonomy and achievement, be it resolved that HCSB will provide English ENG to all Grade 11 students at all secondary schools while they continue to expand "English: Understanding Contemporary First Nations Métis and Inuit Voices" NBE as an alternative and not compulsory course for the 2024-2025 academic year and beyond until further direction from the ministry.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Are you done? Okay. So, Trustee Murphy, you moved the motion. I'm looking for a second.
Bella?
Seconded by Trustee Carabella. Okay, so I heard, Trustee, I'll let you know, one second. So I've heard that trustees want some more time to ask questions and to save some little time. I'm just gonna ask Superintendent Crowell to first present the stuff that was discussed at last meeting. We'll not take any questions, just information. So Superintendent Crowell, could you present? And then, then I shall open up the formal three minutes, and we shall take the motion to postpone. Now, this is being done to save time, so some trustees' questions can be answered at one time.
Director Payne? Thank you, Chair. Before we have the presentations that you're about to see, I want to thank our Indigenous education advisor, Sherry Sable, for being here and for the ongoing work that she has done to make our board better, to challenge us as lead educators, because we're always learning, and learners and our students and our community, to push forward the call that we have all been asked to respond to, which is to further the goals of reconciliation, authentic and true reconciliation. And that someone like myself, who comes from a background of settlers, who came from different parts of the globe and stumbled here and managed to get to Canada, that this provides for us an opportunity to rectify wrongs, to understand and to grow in a more authentic way with peaceful existence. And so I want to thank her for that. I want to thank Superintendent Crowell for being here as well, and it's been a lot of work, I think, to ensure that there was clarity around this decision and clarity around pedagogy around this and all sorts of, I think, questions as well that need to be, that are being asked to clarify. So thank you for the work that you've done as well for this. So I really just want to tee it up that way, and I'll turn the mic over to the two of you, so thank you.
Sure, and in my haste to get the screen set up here, I turned off the board computers. Wait a minute as it boots back up.
Just a point of clarification. I'm not, yeah, I'm not understanding this procedure for the setup, because when it's, it's an action item.
Right.
So I'm not understanding how the staff has this moment now.
Correct.
What procedure are we following?
So, so as Chair of the Board, it's my duty to give information to trustees. I also want to let all trustees know that there was a motion in 2021, which talked, which was similar to this particular item. And I wanted Superintendent Crowell to bring that up and provide trustees with information. So this information is just being presented at this point in time. There's no questions and debate. So as we proceed, I've heard from trustees that we need more time to ask, and you approached me for more time. So probably this might help reduce the time and give you opportunities to ask more questions. So I, as Chair, I would like to now invite Superintendent Crowell. We aren't taking any questions. There's gonna be no debates at all.
No, this is to what you're saying. So are you saying that going forward in the future for another motion, notice of motion or a motion, that we can bring in somebody to introduce?
So I have listened to trustees. Trustees have come and asked me, including you, Trustee Carabella, for more time. So, you know, in the order to save time, I know you have something coming up, and I'll attend to that. But in order to save time, I know there's lots of common questions to trustees. So I've requested Superintendent Crowell to give some background of a motion which existed in 2021. So just so that trustees are aware, there are lots of trustees who were not present at that point in time. So Superintendent Crowell, like you, to give some background information to parents, oh, to trustees, sorry.
Sure, thank you. And the time couldn't have worked out better. Okay, just want to give a little bit more background information based on some of the questions that were asked at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and also address some of the correspondences come in as well. Just, I think there's a bit of an opportunity maybe to do a little bit more of the whys behind this. So just gonna talk about a few things tonight. First of all, I want to talk about the Truth and Reconciliation Commission and the calls to action related to education. Talk next about the position at the Institute of Catholic Education and the Canadian Conference of Catholic Bishops. Talk a bit about the uptake by school boards across Ontario with NBE. Talk a little bit about the NBE curriculum, and then what our path implementation is. So you would be aware of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission that took roughly five years and published a final report in 2015 with a subsequent commitment by the Canadian government for action. And part of the creation of this was 92 calls to action by the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. One of them spoke specifically to the Catholic Church. So, quote, "We call upon the Pope to issue apology to survivors, their families, and communities for the Roman Catholic Church's role in their spiritual, cultural, emotional, physical, and sexual abuse of First Nations Inuit Métis children in Catholic-run residential schools." Pope Francis did issue an apology on behalf of the Catholic Church in April 22 and visited Canada in July 22 as part of this commitment. Calls 62 through 65 speak specifically to education. It's call 62 that I think is the most important here. "We call upon the federal, provincial, and territorial governments in consultation and collaboration with survivors, Aboriginal peoples, and educators to make age-appropriate curriculum on residential schools, treaties, and Aboriginal peoples' historical and contemporary contributions to Canada a mandatory education requirement for kindergarten to grade 12 students." And I'll repeat that word mandatory because it is important. Position, we're often asked, what's the position of ICE, so the Institute of Catholic Education? "In 2019, the Institute of Catholic Education published a document entitled 'Walking Forward Together: A Call to Action for the Catholic Church and Catholic Schools.'" In this document, quote, "Many of the calls to action emphasize the importance of education." The final report, referring back to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, identified many opportunities to achieve reconciliation with Indigenous peoples through educational initiative. In the words of Justice Murray Sinclair, Chair of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, "Education is what got us into this, what got us here, and education is what will get us out." So again, this was the position of ICE in 2019. The position at the Canadian Conference of Catholic Bishops, so their response to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. We won't read all of this, there's a lot of, it's a very long document. "The Truth and Reconciliation Report stresses that a recognition of past wrongs ought to be accompanied by a practical commitment to heal enduring injustices. As representatives of Catholic faith in Canada and counting on the full collaboration of the Canadian Catholic Aboriginal Council, we appeal to all Catholic brothers and sisters, laity, members of institutes of consecrated life, and societies of apostolic life, deacons, priests, and bishops, to make their own commitments." Further said, "To continue to work with Catholic educational institutions and programs of formation and learning to tell the history of Canada in a way that is truthful, ensuring proper treatment of the history and experience of Indigenous peoples, including the experience of oppression and marginalization which resulted from the Indian Act, the residential school system, and frequent ignoring or undermining of signed treaties." The King Conference of Catholic Bishops then issued a further response after the papal visit. "So imporned by the recent papal visit and the delegation to Rome and conversations with Indigenous partners at the local, national, and regional levels in the past year, the Bishops of Canada pledge their commitment to continue supporting Catholic institutions, seminaries, and religious communities to foster a greater understanding of Indigenous culture, cultural, linguistic, and spiritual traditions and values. Working with Indigenous partners, we hope that this support will result in more direct encounters with Indigenous communities where clergy and laypeople hear the history of this land from an Indigenous perspective with attention to the issues of colonization and residential schools." So there's responses from ICE, there's response from the Canadian bishops. The Ministry of Education, their commitment for the Truth and Reconciliation was the development of the Grade 11 English courses focused on contemporary First Nations Métis and Inuit voices. They were published in 2019 as part of the Council of Ministers of Education, so ministers vacation from across Canada, as their commitment to truth and reconciliation. Want to be clear that the NBE course is first an English curriculum course. It's not an Indigenous education course. It's not only an Indigenous education course. It is equivalent. So Grade 11 NBE 3U is equivalent to ENG 3U and is recognized as an English course by colleges and universities. And there's a statement from the University of Waterloo, as one of many universities. When we compare the courses, all English courses have the same four strands: oral communication, reading and literature studies, writing, and media studies. The only difference is, in the NBE courses, there's a fifth strand. This strand layers over the skills being developed in the four strands. The additional strand in the Grade 11 Indigenous Education Course explores First Nations, Métis, and Inuit cultures, communities, customs, perspectives, identities, and issues. Both courses have the same prerequisite, and both courses are prerequisites for the Grade 12 English. It's also worth noting that curriculum documents do not prescribe specific texts or methods of assessment. Curriculum expectations in English focus on student skills. So for example, reading from reading is in both documents. Understanding form and style, both documents. Developing and organizing content, both documents. What's the uptake been across Ontario? Where do we stand in the sort of the landscape across Ontario? So People for Education did a survey of boards and marched 2023. Thirty-one school boards have mandated NBE as their mandatory English course, including 12 Catholic boards. And in speaking recently with the Ministry of Education just this week, there are additional boards that have adopted this course as mandatory since this report was published.
Just a, sorry, point of clarification. I'm really having difficulty because we can ask these questions and have it clarified versus you leading the motion. It's a motion by Emma, and you're leading it, and she has not had spoken to it yet. And we can ask the questions of you when the time comes for our question period.
Thank you. Trustee, Trustee Carabella? This I should clarify. Should I clarify a little more to you? This piece of information being provided is germane to the discussion, okay? Under the Education Act, Section 218.4, subsection D, it is my duty as a Chair of the Board to provide trustees with information. And since it is germane to the topic, the information is being presented. I have checked and verified this is Parliamentary Court, and it's the correct procedure we can follow.
I would expect then the same courtesy be afforded to future motions by trustees?
We shall, we shall, we shall, when we get there, we shall see if the topic is germane to the discussion, and we will get there. Superintendent Crowell, you're the floor.
Certainly, thank you. So I know it's a bit of an eye chart here, so I will just note the Catholic boards that have adopted this. Algonquin Catholic, Algonquin and Lake Shore Catholic, Catholic District School Board of Ontario, Durham Catholic, Hamilton-Lumber Catholic, Canora Catholic, Niagara Catholic, Northeastern Catholic, Ontario Catholic, St. Clair Catholic, Thunder Bay Catholic, Wellington Catholic, York Catholic. And we've also heard that Waterloo Catholic District School Board is going through the same process of implementation for next year. I'd also like to draw attention to a motion in September 16th, 2021, from Trustee Agnew. The motion presented was to increase the promotion of culturally diverse courses, specifically the Native Studies course. Since that time, we have increased promotion while building capacity within our educator staff through professional development. As you're well aware, in April 23, staff brought news that some schools will be piloting Grade 11 NBE courses as their Grade 11 English offering in Semester 1 of the 23-24 school year. Feedback was gathered and shared at the March 5th board meeting. I stated at the last meeting that feedback is important for a variety of reasons. We have, when we do pilot projects, we get feedback. STEAM is, the STEAM program at Loyola is a very good example of a program where we get feedback that improves the delivery of that program for subsequent years. The feedback that we got from that, some positive, some negative, is already being implemented in the professional development that's going on for staff in preparation for next year. The rest of your resource selection, because that's come up a couple of times as well. I just wanted to note a couple of things. HCSB staff work collectively with board staff, school staff to recommend texts and resources to support all courses. Resource selection is done in alignment with Policy 2-25, the first principle, and we looked at this policy not that long ago. HCSB approves learning and library materials to support equality of education, which integrates... which integrates the Catholic faith and the teachings of the gospel within the school curriculum. And I would further note that when a text, whether it's secular or religious, is taught in a Catholic school, it's taught by Catholic educators, bringing a Catholic perspective. Feedback from survey, just wanted to highlight a few things because we did talk a bit about the feedback from the survey last week, but didn't really dive into it. Some of the positives that we heard, I'll just highlight a couple. It opened discussion for families based on student learning. It deepens learning done in earlier grades. Opportunities to learn about Indigenous culture and oral traditions. Students able to connect their learning to Catholic graduate expectations among some of the feedback. Definitely heard some other feedback as well, some concerns. One of the concerns is that students may not be prepared for Grade twelve English. I think that's a misunderstanding that we're certainly trying to clarify and make sure that parents understand that this is an English course with the same skill development. There were questions about should it be offered in another course or grade? There isn't an equivalent curriculum for Grade ten History or Grade ten English. The only other way we could do that would be implementing sort of a mandatory elective for students to take, which would further reduce student choice. Concerns about not enough traditional literature. Throughout elementary and secondary school, there are ample opportunities for students to be exposed to all types of literature, including traditional texts. Talked already about suitability of materials previously. The last one around removal of student choice I want to address. Students are required to take Grade eleven English. It's not an elective, they don't have choice, they have to take Grade eleven English to get their secondary school diploma. We're not asking them to take an elective as a required course, we're asking them to take Grade eleven English. We're asking them to help us make sure we fill out our commitment to truth and reconciliation. Call back to the first couple of slides. Mandatory Indigenous education course was the call from Truth and Reconciliation. Conclusion, this is a quote from J. Michael Miller, Archbishop of Vancouver. "We will continue to seek ways to contribute to healing and education, and to teach the full truth about the history of the encounter between Aboriginal and non-Aboriginal peoples. We recommend ourselves, in solidarity with all people of goodwill, to be heralds of hope and reconciliation, a process which demands patience, work for justice, and authentic mutual dialogue." Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. So we have definitely no questions, no discussions at this point in time. So trustee Murphy has put a motion on the floor, I've just moved. She moved a motion, trustee Carabella has seconded. Trustee Murphy, you have five minutes to speak to that motion.
Mister Chair.
And then, yeah, and then after that.
Well, it should be before she speaks.
Okay, we could do that, yes, for sure.
Know what's going on.
Okay, no problem, we can do it, no problem. So trustee Carabella, you have your hand up, you're the floor, you asked a question, you want to post, sorry, you want to?
Yes, I wanted to make a motion to amend bylaw, to suspend bylaw ten point four, the open and closed debate on a main motion.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. So the open and closed debate on the main motion. So this is the motion where we speak for five minutes. The presenter speaks for five minutes, and there's three minutes for question time, and there's three minutes for debate time. So trustee Carabella is looking to suspend that particular bylaw. To suspend the rules, it is not debatable. You have a motion, and you need to third vote.
Yeah.
Correct. So for this, I shall need a mover. May I have a more, trustee Carabella, you move? I'm looking for a second to suspend that.
I'll second.
Second, trustee Murphy. This is not debatable, so.
Why I'm putting it on the table.
Trustee Carabella, to suspend the rules is not debatable. But, but, yeah, I get it, you could explain that, yes, you're not debating that.
We're not debating it, but I'm explaining it that I'm asking so that if trustees have more than three minutes of questions, or as the debate, or the questions come up, and we're triggered with another question, and now you're here to answer our questions, that we're not limited to three minutes, and that we can come back with another question. Same with the debate. The way that we're ten point four works is that we're only allowed each trustee three minutes to debate. And then someone might say something, we might want to comment and debate back to it. So this motion to suspend would allow us more than three minutes and allow us a chance to come back and debate. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, for clarifying that. So I shall now call the vote on suspending bylaw ten point four. We need a two-third vote, so you need to have a six, four vote, okay? Vice Chair Agnew, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
Opposed.
Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Trustee Dipu?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Uhren Chanada?
Opposed.
And trustee Duarte is opposed. So we have four in favor, we have five opposed. The motion to suspend bylaw ten point four fails. So we shall now move on to the main motion. Trustee Murphy, you have five minutes, and give me a second, please. Trustee Murphy, your time starts now.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and through you to my colleagues and everyone at the board table. Thank you for that. I did read the Truth and Reconciliation Commission today, so thanks, it wasn't new information to me. It doesn't change where I, the reason why I'm bringing this motion forward. I'd just like to reiterate that my primary responsibility is to represent the interests and the concerns of the constituents that I serve, who I serve. I'm ensuring that they have their voice, it's heard, and that their needs are being addressed at the board table. In the stakeholder feedback for NBE, the feedback was fairly mixed, with fifty-one percent of parents being dissatisfied or very dissatisfied with the pilot of the NBE course. I'd also like to note that in the achieving component of our multi-year strategic plan, it states that we must center students as co-creators of their learning pathways. And while I know you mentioned that this is an English course, it's not an Indigenous course per se, I still feel that if we look at the feedback, we need a little bit more, I think, parents should be afforded, and students should be afforded at least more time to have the NBE expanded before making it the only option for them in Grade eleven. I also want to mention that on your first slide, you had indicated that the Truth and Reconciliation Commission had mentioned about mandatory. Can I actually see that first slide again? Sure. So it says, "Make age-appropriate curriculum on residential schools, treaties, and Aboriginal peoples' historical and contemporary contributions to Canada a mandatory education requirement for kindergarten-to-grade-12 students." So nowhere in this does it say that the NBE is to be made mandatory. As far as I can tell from the ministry, it's not a compulsory course as of yet. And I also would like to state that in my motion, in no way am I saying that this is not a good course, or that students shouldn't take it. I think it's an excellent option, and I believe it should remain an option until further notice from the ministry. I'd also like to mention too that upon reviewing the Grade eleven curriculum documents, it specifically states that "Students will read a variety of student and teacher-selected texts from diverse cultures and historical periods. They should be exposed to literary works from many genres and cultures." So again, I'm just simply reiterating that until further notice from the ministry, I think students deserve to be reading from a broad selection of texts. And by mandating a course, that's going to limit the selection process for the department heads, for the teachers, for the students. It's just, it's a limiting choice for the students. So thank you for your consideration, and that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. With this, I shall now open up the floor for open up question time. Give me a second here. Okay, so trustees, we have three minutes question time. There will be no amendments at this point in time. We just ask questions. You can ask questions, trustee Murphy, you can ask questions from staff. Trustee Murphy, if you are not comfortable answering your question, you can pass. Okay, so with this, I shall now open up the floor. First up is Vice Chair Agnew, you're the floor, and your three minutes starts now.
Thank you very much, and through you, Mister Chair, good thing I'm a fast talker. I do have a question, and I'm glad that it came up about feedback, because I did as well, I'll read through all of the feedback, and had the opportunity to have many conversations with parents and students who would be impacted by this decision. And I'm wondering how any of those negative pieces with respect to feedback will be addressed. So we know that there's always an opportunity to identify gaps, that's what a pilot is for. So recognizing that some of them may have had some validity to them, the first time you roll something out, you may have a little bit of a stumbling block. Could you just speak to how, what that plan is to address some of those concerns that were brought forward as part of that?
Superintendent Crowell?
Sure, certainly, through you, Mister Chair. And I just want to take the opportunity to say hello to Siobhan Crossen, who's our English consultant who's here tonight. Siobhan is one of the staff members who's responsible for the professional development for English teachers around this. Siobhan read the feedback, and Sherry read the feedback before I got my hands on it. So they actually got it first, and then they shared it with me, which is great. Because like, as we were planning the professional development specifically for what we're doing, the PD that's going on right now, they read it, they saw it, they heard it, and they're acting on it, right? So the concerns that were raised by parents, as I said earlier, are helpful, right? It's, if, I would be surprised if we got it, if there was nothing but positive feedback all the way through. But the feedback that we got, sort of some concerns around, maybe this text didn't work, or concerns around, there wasn't enough joy, right? It seemed like the course was kind of dark. Those are things that I know that Sherry and Siobhan have been actively addressing with those teachers, to make sure that there's a balanced approach. So I'm confident in Sherry and Siobhan, and our department heads, the teachers that are receiving the training, that the feedback, the concerns that parents raised, will result in improved product going forward.
Vice Chair?
Thank you for that answer, and again, through you, Mister Chair. So one of the other questions that I have is around. So there was, and you addressed it a little bit, but there was some, some parents have had a bit of a challenge understanding what this looks like, and haven't had the opportunity to dive into, you know, a lot. And really, for some courses, they don't, they don't take a look, but there's, you know, a little bit more conversation around this. So is there going to be an opportunity to communicate to parents, to advise them of maybe some of the FAQs? Or I don't know, some of the things that have come up here tonight? Because in a lot of the conversations I've had, a lot of it is just required clarity. They weren't sure, they thought it was history course, they thought, all of the things that we've been speaking about. So I'm wondering if there's going to be an opportunity to provide parents with information on this change, and what this means for their students.
Superintendent Crowell?
Sure, certainly, through you, Mister Chair. Yeah, we would use a similar communication plan of what we used last year when we implemented the pilot programs. So we spent a lot of time explaining to parents the what and the why, and then provided a long list of FAQs, and then someone that they could reach out to contact if they had further questions. We want to make sure that parents understand why we're doing this, answer any questions that they might have. It is new, and it is different. So we want to make sure that when change happens, people understand the why behind change, the importance of the change, and opportunity to ask further questions.
Vice Chair? Done? Okay, thank you, thank you. Up next is trustee Sanders, you have three minutes, your time starts now.
Thank you, through you, Mister Chair. Superintendent Crowell, both my daughters took this course and enjoyed it. And my concern is that this is supposed to be a positive, and we've got a lot of negative comment. And I'm thinking, would it not be a better approach to go out with a communication strategy first? Educate people, get them feeling comfortable with this, and then launch it, rather than sort of say, you know, launch it, here's some communication, you know, there really is no opportunity to really impact how we're moving forward. So like, I would think it would be a better approach to defer this, do the communication, get people on board, let them know what's going on, and then bring the course in. You know, taking into account the feedback, because I mean, I'm getting emails too, where there's a lot of concern. So it just concerns that this is supposed to be a good positive thing we're moving forward, and we're really not, it doesn't look like it's moving that way, it looks like it may be an acrimonious thing.
Superintendent Crowell?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how to respond to that, except that I think the feedback that has been helpful for us in implementation, I think making sure that parents understand the why behind this is important. But I think this is something that can't wait for another year, where these students don't get that opportunity to take this course. I think it's that important. As I said earlier, pilot programs don't always launch smoothly. Programs like the STEAM program, there were certainly lots to be learned from the program starting at Loyola next year that's informed improvements, not only for the program at Loyola, but as well as launching the program at Notre Dame and FX for next year. We only learn sometimes by doing. We can only spend so much time planning, then we have to implement, and then we change our course, we correct, we get better, as we've done with destreaming, right? The first year of destreaming certainly had some challenges, I think we made leaps and bounds in progress. So I don't think we can wait, I think this is that important.
I think trustee Sanders?
Just a quick call up. Yeah, you know, I've been through a lot of these changes in my professional career, and this is not the way to do it. I'm going to be honest with you. Going out telling people this is what's going to happen, and we'll follow up, it's like, you know, ready, shoot, aim. And I just don't, I don't think this is going to accomplish what we want to. We want to have a positive, fulsome course that people really like. It's not like we're getting the horse for the cart, thank you.
Trustee Sanders? Up next is trustee Powell. Trustee Powell, you have the floor, you have three minutes.
Thank you, through your chair. I actually thought this was a fairly new course. I didn't realize it's been around for quite a long time. My older sons never took it. I have a child in Grade eleven right now, and I think it's a great idea. But I have a couple of questions, and one of them is about teacher training. So I did have a conversation with friends of ours who, one teaches in the Catholic and one teaches in the public. Public Board, this is already mandatory in the public Board, correct? Because that's what he said, and I was very surprised, I didn't know that. So that's something important to note. And it has been really well received in the public Board, is what I was told. So that was encouraging. But teacher training, so I'm going to assume that most of our teachers within our Board don't have formal education in on teaching this course. How do we, how, sorry, not we, how are you going to train them in a way that will do it justice? As well as getting the core things they need, sorry, I've had a lot, like the skills.
Superintendent Crowell?
Sure, and I think this would be one where I'm going to just, I'm going to have our Indigenous Education Advisor, Sherry Staple, respond.
Yes, thank you. We've been doing the training with teachers for probably about six years. So this is not new to our school board. We have been doing the training with numerous teachers, elementary, secondary, but more importantly, secondary. The last year, we ended up pulling all the English teachers, letting them know what the plan was for implementation. This, this year, and until the end of the year, we are going to every single secondary school and pulling out the, not pulling out, but giving professional development to the English teachers, so that all of them, even though they may not be teaching NBE next year, still have that knowledge and that awareness about what is coming. We have provided numerous resources and always having an open door policy, where, you know, we have an awful lot of people that will be able to assist us in doing this work. We were today at STA, and they were just so excited to start teaching it, they had the resources. We have the online shell that was from the Ontario Catholic Virtual School. And so that has also been uploaded on our OLS. So the resources are there, and every single teacher that we have talked to, as well as parents, because we do talk to parents as well, but the teachers are really excited and wanting to do the work that is just.
Thank you, trustee Powell. Your next question? Your next question? Okay, thank you, Trustee Powell. Up next, we have Trustee Carabella, you have the floor and you have three minutes, that starts now.
Okay, I wanted to just first clarify so that there were 400 students in the mandated pilot project. And how, what was the total number of grade 11 students at our schools?
Superintendent Kroll or staff?
Don't have that information in front of me.
You don't have, Trustee Carabella, Superintendent does not have that information. Next question, please.
Okay, I find that surprising because we did ask that question last time too. So that would be helpful to be clarified to show the percentage. So my next question is, students have already gotten a chance to sign up and the NBE has not been on their selection sheet. So how many now have chosen NBE voluntarily?
Superintendent Kroll?
I wouldn't be able to answer that question as we're still sort of finalizing auction sheets. I know that Superintendent Denofe was working with principals on staffing and sections, but I, I wouldn't suggest that she would have that information yet either, to be honest.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella.
So, but am I reasonable to expect based on the other numbers that out of thirty-three, thirty-five hundred students, grade 11, 95% have not chosen NBE as an option?
Superintendent Kroll?
I wouldn't want to speculate, but I would suspect that the uptake for the course has been increasing, but it certainly would, it wouldn't be the majority of students that would choose this course.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella.
Yeah, so to clarify, a majority would be like 50%. So that's not, that is not happening that 50% of students would choose NBE and 50% would choose ENG. So I think it's closer to 5% choose NBE and 95% choose ENG. Okay, so my next question is.
Director Klein has his hand up.
I'm just confused by the math here, Trustee Carabella. I'm not sure what, where we're going with this. You're talking about hypotheticals, I think, right? We had 3,000 students and some didn't get a chance to choose this. But it wasn't, I'm just confused by the, by the numbers. I'm not sure if Superintendent Kroll has a greater sense of what is being asked, but I, I just don't, I'm confused by it.
Superintendent Kroll?
I think what Trustee Carabella is trying to ask is are, are students choosing this of their own free will or are? And I can tell you that our experience has been, we have not, we have certainly advertised this course. But I will also say that there are many sort of mandatory courses which students take that come through the ministry. We also have mandatory courses that we decide as Catholic schools are good for students. And I just think that just because students don't necessarily choose this, this course, doesn't mean it's not the right choice for those students.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Well, to follow up, this isn't a mandatory course from the government. So we are not mandated to, to give, to give it and giving student choice helps them to be engaged, which leads into my next question. There are repercussions when students are forced to take a course and it's not their options. Some being student disengagement, not trying as hard, maybe not getting marks as high, affecting their university entrance. Are you anticipating this and how do you plan to address this?
Superintendent Kroll or Director Klein?
Just, I guess, I'm not sure if Dr. Colmore has anything to add to this, but research and data in terms of student disengagement is not necessarily a linear, I don't have a choice for a course, therefore I disengage. There's a lot of variables involved. From the pedagogical style of the teacher to the assessment strategies, to who you're sitting beside in some occasions and sometimes what the reading material might be within that, how well that's been planned and how that well that's been executed. But I would just caution that those one-to-one connections are, I don't think they're supported by research.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll?
Sure, if that was the case, if we'd seen student disengagement or poor performance from students, that would have come through loud and clear from the, the survey, from the educators that, that took part in that survey. That was not something that was communicated by them. So I don't think we can make the assertion that if students take this course, they'll be disengaged or won't perform well academically.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella.
How many more minutes do I have? Yet. So you mentioned about another previous motion and you've talked in the past about the AP, pre- AP and IP. So in the past, we've had a motion, be it resolved that any future proposed change to the AP and IB programs, whether initiated by the Ministry of Otherwise, be brought forth to the Board of Trustees for approval in advance of as well as following community, community consultation. Have you taken this into consideration when you were talking about trying to expand this to AP and IB programs?
Superintendent Kroll or Director Klein? Superintendent Kroll?
Yeah, I, I, I'll be honest with you. We're not changing the AP or IB programming. We're, we're, they're still taking the same grade 11 English requirement for their OSSD. So I don't think that it's the same as, as the motion that you're referring to around de-streaming a number of years ago with all due respect.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. You have one more question. There's 36 seconds left.
So you mentioned that the department heads represent all teachers. So I've heard from English teachers and, and that English teachers were not consulted. How many English teachers are there?
Superintendent Kroll?
I wouldn't have that information.
Trustee Carabella?
What will be the impact on teacher morale when some who are not wanting to teach this program have no option but to teach it? When, when a course that they love, that they love to teach is taken away from them? And do you foresee a rise in teacher absenteeism?
Superintendent Kroll?
As a former classroom teacher, there were certainly times when I didn't get to pick the courses that I wanted. I still did a great job teaching them because I was more concerned with the students that were in front of me, making sure that they got a quality education. We've heard none of that feedback from the educators and the professional development that we've done. I don't think that's an equation you can make between teacher absenteeism and this, this motion.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. You have 10 seconds more. You can ask another question.
Can you clarify about university acceptance? Because I've talked to students in grade 12 that are accepted into universities not having an Indigenous English course. Thank you.
Superintendent Kroll?
I don't think I've ever stated that universities require an Indigenous education course. I think what was said at the last meeting is some universities are now making it part of their university programs to have an Indigenous education course.
Thank you. That, Trustee Carabella, you have finished your three minutes. I shall now move on down to our next speaker, Trustee Ohan Chanata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, through you. So really I have an opposite question to Trustee Saunders. What's taken us so long? That's my question. What's taken us so long to mandate this course? And I know my second question, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Superintendent of curriculum, I'm sure in your utopia with your wheelhouse, you would have us teach every course that there is known to man or woman, correct? So in order to have the NBE course and the Shakespearean English, what seems to be the roadblock that we just can't offer all of those courses for all of our students?
Sure.
Superintendent Kroll?
Yeah, I, I, I'm glad that you brought up the first part because it means that I don't get, I, I can sort of give credit where credit is due. And that's Superintendent Porcasin, who was, who was sort of, was here before me, that somebody may be familiar with. She was the initial driver behind this. Were it not for the pandemic in 2020, we would have been looking to implement sort of in 2020 or 2021. We felt at the time there was enough disruption for students, that this was something that we didn't want to provide further disruption. It's, it's not that it wasn't important, it's that there were so many competing priorities at that time. So what took us so long? This has been in the works, as Sherry said, for a number of years. The reason that we can't offer all of the courses and the reason that the more choice that we offer creates problems for us, particularly around times in sort of where we have fiscal constraints is, the more courses that we offer, especially to meet the same requirement for the diploma, means we sometimes have to add more teaching staff. So if we're offering NBE and ENG at the same time, at the, sort of the same level, depending on the number of students that choose those courses, it, and I'm not saying it does. So it's not like, I'm not saying there's a direct comparison, but there could be opportunities where we have to add additional staff. And Superintendent Lofts, you, like I said, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Superintendent Lofts.
Yeah, that is true. Superintendent Kroll, the other part too to remember is adding additional classrooms. So if you have the choice, you have additional classrooms, which as we know in the north, space is at a premium and additional classrooms in itself would create problems and portables and things like that.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanata.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So another question about teacher training, just a question. When we're providing PD for a trace, because I've heard a lot about the voice of the teachers and they're concerned about training. You would provide feedback, they'd have a voice to be able to say, hey, I'm not feeling confident here, can we have a retrain? Is that correct?
Superintendent Kroll?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. I'll start and then I'll certainly turn over to Sherry for further comment. One of the adjustments that I'm really proud of the department has made this year is some of the training we've done in the past, we've pulled large groups of educators where we've presented to them. Recognizing that we want to make sure that teachers get what they need and feel comfortable. We're going to them, we're meeting them in their space. We're making, sort of, making an opportunity for them to be a little bit more vulnerable. Maybe to ask questions that they wouldn't ask in a large group, maybe express some concerns that they wouldn't feel comfortable. And we've seen great gains in sort of teacher engagement that way. But I'll certainly let you through on it further.
And that's true. We, the, the way that the, the teachers have come forward to us in a smaller group has offered that discussion. And to even say, you know, I, I feel that now I finally feel that I'm ready or I might need this. I'm, I know I'm going to have to maybe do X, Y, Z over the summer. So, and they're, and they're open to talk to us about that. So that is a positive as well, that we're developing that relationship with all the, with all the teachers and, and, and they're feeling comfortable with talking to us.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanata.
How much time do I have? Lots of time. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein. So I had a few questions because we're talking about the voice of our stakeholders or the voice of the customers. So we've had a lot of emails. Some of them I can discern. You know, I've had one email for one, one constituent from Christ the King. But the other emails, I have no idea whether this is the voice of our stakeholders or a voice of someone in Vancouver. So do we have any kind of information on that? So I can make an informed decision based upon our voice of our stakeholders?
Director Klein?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanata. When we sort of pressed pause and saw the number of emails that had come in, we counted them at 35. Thirty-five emails had come in. We had asked Superintendent Lofts to work to see if there were names that aligned with the database in terms of our own rate pairs and stakeholders. And of those, we confirmed 30, 13 of 35, so 13.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanata?
Do I have more time?
One point thirty-six.
Perfect. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Kroll. Do you believe in your heart of hearts, Superintendent, curriculum, this is the right thing to do?
Superintendent Kroll?
I, I, I wouldn't be here if I wasn't. I, I, I wouldn't be here if I didn't feel passionately about this. I wouldn't be here if this was an opportunity I want for my own two kids who are going to go through the system. My son starts high school next year. I want this experience for him. Because I didn't have this experience. I learned about the things that I should have learned in school in my twenties and thirties. I don't want that to be the experience for my son or my daughter. So I look at it as much from a parent, as an educator. I think we have a collective responsibility around truth and reconciliation. That's been laid out very clearly by ICE and very clearly by the Catholic bishops. They're, they're our boss. They're the ones who are sort of, give us our mandate for Catholic education. I think we're doing this in partnership with other Catholic boards. I think we have a greater responsibility as Catholic educators than public school educators to offer this course. Because I think it's part of our, of our history and I think it's part of the acknowledgement that the responsibility we have to do better as Catholics. So yes, do I feel passionate about this? Absolutely.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanata.
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanata. Up next, we have Trustee Chua. Give me a second. Okay, Trustee Chua, you have three minutes. Time starts now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I just want to clarify about the funding that MB3U has. Because I know I took it last year. It was honestly the best decision of my life. The thing that really set it apart was the experiential learning that the ministry was able to give us because I know last year at least there was more funding allocated. So I was just wondering, does that still stand? Are we still able to provide our students like with more funding so that they're able to learn beyond just from reading a text?
Superintendent, Ms. Sable?
Yes, thank you through you, Chair. Yes, everybody, we'll still have that opportunity to have experiential learning. We're having partnerships with Woodland Culture Centre, different places that we have already been before, as well as having other people come in. So those experiential learning are so important in order to have, deepen our learning when it comes to Indigenous perspectives and the text. Things like author visits, you know, things like that. So that, that will still be an opportunity.
Thank you. Trustee Chua? No more questions? Okay, thank you. Up next, we have Trustee McGuire. Trustee McGuire, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Chair. I just want to thank Superintendent Kroll and Ms. Sable for being up here tonight and giving us this information. It was a wonderful reminder. I also wanted to, I also just wanted to, sorry, is there connection issues? Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, you, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to, I really liked what you said about how the NBE3U curriculum helps us to fulfill our commitment to being a distinctly Catholic board. As a student who is in the course right now, I see a lot how the mission of justice and truth is being fulfilled through this. So if you wanted to expand on that, could you share how it kind of helps us to live out our mission as a Catholic board? Thank you.
Superintendent Kroll or Ms. Sable?
Sure. And I think you could probably answer that as well as I could, Trustee McGuire. But I'm, I'm pleased to hear that that's the experience that you're having and it, we had a, an Indigenous chief come and present to senior administrators and our school administrators a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that he said, and I'm going to paraphrase it very badly, but I'm going to do my best, was, he said, "None of us created this situation. All of us have inherited the situation. We have a collective responsibility to work together to get through this situation." And he said, "Education is, is one of the keys to that." And I've thought a lot about that since. We do, we are all inheritors of a past which we didn't necessarily sort of create. And we all bear a collective responsibility as Catholics, as Canadians, to truth, as Sherry said in the last meeting, to truth first before reconciliation.
Thank you, Trustee McGuire. Next question?
No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McGuire. Up next, we have Trustee Dipu. Trustee Dipu, you have the floor. I know there's a delay, but we, your time starts now.
Sorry, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so thank you for that presentation. I, I personally have not taken the Indigenous course, so I, I just want to educate myself a little bit more on that. I know you've talked about this before, but I just wanted to clarify in regards to the AP and IB programs. Will this course incorporate the requirements for those programs so that students are prepared for the, the AP and IB exams in grade 12? And how will that happen?
Superintendent Kroll?
Certainly through you. Yeah, that's a, the great question, student trustee Dipu. We would never implement something that would impact a pathway that a student has already chosen or program that they're, they're committed to. So we're going to actively work with those schools, those AP coordinators and IB coordinators to ensure that they can certainly meet the requirements of the AP and IB exams. I don't think that's something that you or any other student or parent needs to worry about. We know our responsibility to those programs as well.
Thank you, Trustee Dipu.
Yeah, I, I just had that one question. Thank you so much.
Let's see, Trustee Kennedy, you have the, your hand up. Give me a second. Okay, Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Just wondering, what, what other programs or events or items do we do in our, in our schools regarding truth and reconciliation? So we have NBE and I think we have grade nine art. Do we do anything else? I know grade eight classes, I'm familiar with the courses, they do book reports and movie reviews. But do we do anything else? Do we do seminars or?
Superintendent Kroll?
We do a lot of community engagement with parents as well as with Indigenous, with our Indigenous students. We have an Indigenous advisory. We have an Indigenous Advisory Committee that also does work within the community. We have had movie, movie nights, we've had seminars, we've had What You Need to Know About the Truth and Reconciliation. Those have already happened in the past, where we've also had Indigenous Education and Human Rights courses that we ran last year that we will be able, that we'll be running again this year. And more in the way of, of just offering certain things in the community. So yes, we have.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy.
Just wondering, how many years have we had the MBE course offered? Was it twenty fifteen, I believe, I heard, a year there mentioned?
Superintendent Kroll.
Uh, I, going back, I would say it's probably, like, I know the most recent iteration of the curriculum came out in twenty nineteen. But I would know it was before that, but it preceded me a little bit, so I don't know if I can give you the exact date.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy.
Uh, I'm just wondering, um, so it's been, say, eight years, let's say, maybe eight to ten years. Just, why, why have, have we done anything to promote the course? Like, the take-up rate, at the last meeting, we talked about eight to sixteen students. Some schools, you mentioned, they're offered at all the schools, but not all the schools have the course because there's a low take-up. So like, what have we done to promote the course to the community, to students and to parents? To just let them know why this is a good option?
Superintendent Kroll or Ms. Sable?
I, I would note, first of all, that the equivalency hasn't always been there for the grade eleven and being equivalent to the ENG3U, so that was with the twenty nineteen document, I believe. Schools have, I, I think, have done pretty good job in trying to drum up student interest. They, I know that at one school, for example, that the department goes to every grade ten class and talk about the course, talk about the opportunities within the course. Like I said, every school would have a little bit different way of doing that. But it is a course for which because students don't necessarily have an understanding of Indigenous education, they might be a little bit afraid of. They might say that doesn't really sound like something that, that is uncomfortable learning about. I can, I can understand why a fifteen-year-old might not understand that this course is good for them. So I, I can understand that as a parent of a fourteen-year-old. That doesn't necessarily mean that that, that fourteen or fifteen-year-old is making the best choice for themselves, though. So I think our schools have done a remarkable job in trying to draw up interest. I can also understand why the momentum may not be there, which is the reason why so many other schools' boards have gone to make this mandatory. Right, like thirty-four school boards across the province and thirteen Catholic boards have made this mandatory. Because just sixteen-year-olds don't necessarily know what the best course option is for them and know about their, their responsibilities as Canadians for truth and reconciliation.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy.
So like, who would know what's the best course for them? Like, who, who should make that decision? I think it's
Superintendent Kroll?
Sure, I think it's under the purview of the Director of Education. Do you know why, has the ministry released anything through, through you, Mr. Chair, about like mandatory? Like, is there, is there a talk that this course will be compulsory, sorry, not mandatory compulsory in the, in the coming years? Because I just noticed that they're giving a lot of financing, and is it, are they promoting, we have art, we have English, another course, or compulsory course?
Superintendent Kroll or Ms. Sable?
We haven't heard that, we haven't heard that the ministry, the ministry is going to make that decision. They do have the authority to make that decision. But I also believe that individual school boards have the same authority to make that decision. And the ministry's made it very clear that schools can make this decision.
Trustee Kennedy.
Just lastly, I wasn't sure I understood the budget part, there was something about, you mentioned budget, I heard a comment. So if we, is there a budget component? As in, if we have to have another class or another teacher, how does that work? Is there a cost, an extra cost or a reduced cost by having a course?
Superintendent Loftz, through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Kennedy. To kind of maybe piggyback off your previous question, is it mandatory? It's not mandatory, as Superintendent Cole mentioned. But I will say, the province does provide additional funding when class sizes are below a certain threshold in order for boards to offer the program. So even though it's not necessarily mandatory, the province has reached out and said, if you have eight students, you will be running that course. And you will also be funded prorata, they'll give you a prorata funding to get us up to the twenty-three to one. So that was something that's been offered, they changed it slightly last year, the actual formula, but it, it is there for us. And then what I meant, and maybe it wasn't, and I, I kind of maybe went too quickly over it before. So what I meant by the, the budget part of it was, if we think of it, if we currently have all our students right now into the Indigenous course for grade eleven, and then, which is theoretically would be one class. But then if we have two, we would be, theoretically, we would be funded for both teachers. Because as I mentioned before, we're gonna be made up whole up to the twenty-three to one, right, like I mentioned. But what we're not made whole on, and the ministry only funds us for the teacher, not for classroom space, not for all those other items that we, we need to, to run a class. And in some boards where you have a lot of empty classrooms, it's really not as big a concern, you're already paying for your heat and hydro. For us, though, a lot of our classes are, and I think this might be what Superintendent Cole was referring to, by having, going from one class to two classes, it now become a, a space issue as well. So you'd have to have, even though we're funded for the teachers, we still have to have the cost of potentially having a portable. That's what I meant with my previous comment. Superintendent Kroll, you want to add anything to that? Okay, thank you. Trustee Kennedy.
So, so just lastly, so we, we wouldn't get additional funding then? Or, or we would? Okay.
Superintendent Loftz. So, uh, we actually do have additional funding that we received last year, significant amount of additional funding. It was the one point five million that we're talking about in our last meeting. But that wasn't necessarily related purely to the, the classroom teachers and such. Where we would get additional funding, and I don't know if we would if we do have the program for mandatory for all grade eleven English. Let's say that we didn't, we did it the old, the old way, where we had an English, a traditional English class, an Indigenous English class. And let's say we had eight, eight students in the Indigenous class. We would have, so we'd have to hire a teacher for that classroom, we would get additional funding to the equivalency of twenty-three to one. So the ministry would give us additional funding in that situation. So that's additional funding we have there in the classroom. The one point five million was actually a significant amount unrelated, I shouldn't say unrelated, but not necessarily relating to the classroom teacher side of it. Thank you. Trustee Kennedy.
I know that, I understand that, thanks.
Done? Okay. Thank you, trustees, we have had all great questions, and with that, I say no other hand up. We have completed three minutes of question time. And with that, I shall now open up debate in a second. And trustees can put amendments here if required, if, if trustees want. But again, Superintendent Sorry, Ms. Sable and Superintendent Kroll, forgetting. And thank you for answering the questions, and I really appreciate it. So with this, I shall now open up debate time. And as I said, trustees can put amendments if they're required. Trustees, please put your hand up to debate, you have three minutes, and I shall give you the floor. You want a minute or on a break? Okay, trustees, are we okay with a recess of five minutes? Do we want to take a recess? Okay, we shall call a recess in five minutes, it's eight thirty-six right now.
Chair, sorry, where did that come from?
Oh, I, I see that trustees do not want to take a break, so, so, yeah, so, we'll Okay, so, 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 so trustees, trustees. So if it is not unanimous to take a break, then we have to move in second, take a vote, and then move on, or we just continue. So I see it's not unanimous, so we'll continue. Thank you. With that, I shall put, I see three trustees who have their hand up. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor, three minutes, and starts now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the name of respecting diversity of interest and diversity of academic goals of all students, I support keeping English, ENG for the grade eleven students as well as MBE3 for the students. We can, we can promote MBE, that's wonderful. But we don't need to mandate it, force it on thirty-five thousand students based on two hundred students completing a survey with mixed results at that, and not parent, not a majority of parent a voice. This is not reasonable and evidence-based. Students have said in the survey that they've thrived in MBE. Wonderful, that's wonderful for them, they made that choice, they got to thrive. Some students, it wasn't their choice in the, and we heard their comments, and they weren't happy, they didn't thrive. Why should they be denied the chance and the right to thrive? And the right to have a choice when it's not mandated by the ministry? The ministry allows the choice. They are, and, and we know when students are a hundred percent engaged, when they're all in and choice provides that, they will excel to their best potential. This is our mission of achieving believing, belonging, and becoming. And students may resent the option taken away from them and resent the course, and it could be even counterproductive to its aim. I am, I'm not against truth and reconciliation because I am for academic choice. There are many opportunities, we just heard some as well, throughout this student's academic career at our schools that they can learn a lot, and as years go on, and perhaps the ministry will mandate it in another course or in this course, that time will come. There is no urgency to do it right now when ninety-five percent, or, you know, okay, ninety percent of students have not chosen it as their first choice. The ministry is letting kids choose, HCDSB shouldn't supersede the ministry. I think this is a serious disservice to our students by limiting choice. It's important, and especially in such an important subject as English. We had the, the other previous experience, how our board went above and beyond to de-stream pre-AP and pre-IB. And fortunately, through parent engagement, coming back with delegations and letters, that was rescinded. I think that our parent community has not been communicated with CPIC. I don't know if parent councils know this is happening, and they will be surprised. I am here to represent the voices of parents who want academic freedom, of choice for their children, for their futures.
Trustee Carabella, your time is up. Sorry to interrupt. Up next Three minutes. Three minutes. Up next, we Sorry, Trustee Carabella, up next is Trustee McGuire, Trustee McGuire, you're the floor.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you, and through you, Chair. I'm opposed to this motion because I wholeheartedly support the adoption of our MBE3U slash CNE courses as our mandatory grade eleven English courses within our Catholic secondary schools. As a Catholic board, our, we are called to be people of justice and truth. And this gives our board an undeniable commitment to working towards truth and reconciliation, which we have seen through documents like our ninety-four calls to action. That is something that we have to do as an educational institution. The MBE3U course is a wonderful way to implement this and to support students in understanding and learning more about indigeneity, specifically through the perspective of Indigenous authors. Students are able to learn about both the troubled history of our country with Indigenous peoples and events like residential schools, while also learning about the positive aspects of Indigenous culture and Indigenous traditions, helping students to better understand who Indigenous people are and the issues that they face. This has helped to impassion many students, become strong advocates for truth and reconciliation within their school communities and within their lives and stuff, especially as they step out of our schools within the next years as grade eleven students and go into the world. As a board, when we prioritize Indigenous voices, we are sending the message to students that these are important and that these voices should be valued by them. And that sends a very positive message to our students. As we are developing and becoming more equitable as a world, we are moving towards seeing these Indigenous perspectives in many different ways in our workplaces, in our different post-secondary institutions. And being able to learn about indigeneity and the history and the truth behind what Indigenous people have experienced is a great way to prepare students for our world and to just become better people overall. The student, this course is an incredible opportunity, as I've noticed within my own experience in the course, as it gives students really unique opportunities for experiential learning. I've been able to speak to a residential school survivor and also to listen to Cabin Salorum, the Chief of the Causus First Nation. And I've learned a lot from their experiences, and I would definitely would not have this opportunity or insights without this course. I really encourage the board to not support this motion as a way to ensure that we are following our Catholic values by using this course as a way to encourage truth and reconciliation within our students. We have an incredible amount of power as a school, as we are educating the next generation to become advocates for justice. So I hope you keep this in mind, thank you.
Trustee McGuire, good timing. Up next, up next is Trustee Powell, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Chair. I think I'm just talking, so.
Sorry?
Never mind, I'm just talking, right? I'm not, I don't have to talk to
You, uh, this is debate time, so, so you have three minutes.
Maybe I needed that for
Do, do you want to put your hand down and come back later? You want to come back later?
No, I want to talk.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, trustee.
I'm just confused if I had to do through you, I confused the protocol.
Trustee Powell, go ahead.
Thank you. I, um, one of my schools in my area was a pilot project, and it was for the college level. And I didn't receive a single email from any parent or teacher or anything about any issues within the school. So I count that as positive. I had conversations with friends of mine who, like I said, one of my kids is grade eleven, we've had lots of conversations in the past few days about this, or past few weeks. And while there were questions, I think, I think trustee, or Vice Chair Agnew mentioned it about just communication. It was more just questions, and it was information needed. Why are we doing this? What's behind it? How are teachers being trained? And so I, and I had those too. And I, I feel better, and I, I like how trustee Ohern Chenara said, in your heart of hearts, do you feel like this? And I, I want to defer to the experts, you're the curriculum expert, it's director's approval, we're trusting it. So I don't support this motion, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Powell, up, up, up next is Vice Chair Agnew, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd mentioned previously that, you know, I did have the, the privilege and honor of being an English major, and that's what I did in school. And if I truly believed that we had students that were gonna be robbed, for lack of a better term, of the experience of learning a variety of texts, of learning, you know, significant pieces as it pertains to anything but specifically English, I would absolutely be in support of this. But I, I, I feel confident that's not the case. I've reviewed the curriculum, I've asked many questions with respect to how that's being rolled out, what the learning expectations are going to be, the, you know, preparing students for grade twelve. We have four years, there's three other years to be able to take advantage of a variety of different texts and works and literatures that we are going to be exposing our students to. I did not, again, I have, I have a student that's in grade eleven, I have the ability to, to reach out to various stakeholders who are making these decisions for next year, who have been in grade eleven English this year. I did not receive any emails with any concerns about this. I reached out, actually, to try to solicit feedback. And the feedback I got was around clarity and some of the discussions that we've had this evening. It was just understanding more that this is not a history course, this is the way this is going to be taught, here's the importance of it, and the students are not going to suffer. And so, you know, I just, I wanted to comment that I really feel strongly in the ability to support this program. I think this is gonna be an excellent English experience for our students in grade eleven. We have to trust and have faith in our experts here at the board level to be able to implement this for them. Nobody wants to see a student fail. And I think this is really important work that's being done. And for those reasons, I'm not able to support this motion, and I'm looking forward to having this rolled out board-wide. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Up next is trustee Ohern Chenara, you're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So, so as I reflect back, you know, we're in a situation where we have to make a choice. So we have to make a choice, we can't have all the curriculum. So this is the choice we need to make, and I believe in my heart of hearts, this is the right choice to make. Secondly, we've had some comments about the Ministry of Education not mandating it. Now, being a Director of Oxta, Oxta is constantly going to the ministry asking for autonomy. So let us at a school board level have some sort of an autonomy. And I'm not the Ministry of Labor, and I don't have a lawyer beside me, but when they're putting money at it, they think it's pretty important. That would be my personal opinion, but what they're giving us money to perform the function is pretty important. But they're also trying to give us some autonomy that Oxta is constantly and currently battling for at a that Oxta is constantly and currently battling for at a school board level. So I just really wanted to, to speak to that. Obviously, you can tell from my comments tonight, I'm a hundred percent, uh, supportive of that. And, you know, there might be some people that disagree with me and that's fine. We're, we're allowed to do that. But in, in my opinion and from who I've spoken to and the experts I've spoken to, this is the right thing to do. And again, what took us so long? Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Hearn Chanada. Uh, next we have trustee Chua. Trustee Chua, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I just want to highlight that tonight, we've talked a lot about our parent stakeholders and their feedback. We haven't really talked a lot about the stakeholders that truly matter to us the most, which are my stakeholders, Lauren's stakeholders, and Diaz's stakeholders, our students at the board and the students who have taken this course. With the conversations that I've been having, um, throughout the past weeks with, uh, the students who've taken M B E three last year in my own schools, um, and the other schools who've had, uh, those pilot projects, there were overwhelming majority, um, positive feedback from those students, from especially the experiential learning piece that comes with running N B E three U. You can't learn indigenous education properly without experiential learning. And genuinely, that is something that we don't really, really have in a traditional classroom setting. So, you know, giving that to students lets them become more interested. It doesn't let them be disinterested. It doesn't let them, you know, not want to do the course. Um, and the reason that there may be some negative feedback, as I did get a couple, is because it is teacher by teacher basis. I know it was a pilot project. There is room for, um, our indigenous and our English, um, leads to tailor it and to make sure that it is, you know, the way that it should be ran. Again, it was just a pilot project. There are things that can be fixed. But again, it was a teacher on teacher basis and your experience with one course, um, can be different depending on, you know, who you have, who is teaching you for that. And I can wholeheartedly say as a person who has deliberately chosen to take this course last year as my grade eleven, uh, credit, that it has been the highlight of my past fourteen years here in Halton Catholic, from every single class I've taken, from kindergarten all the way up until grade twelve, beyond my religion courses that I've been taking in high school and, and in elementary school. I would argue that it is a more unique course that highlights our Catholic pedagogy and what we want to teach our students as Catholic learners and teach our teachers as Catholic educators. Because we want to foster a system of breaking down those barriers and breaking down those, those stigmas. And M B E three U is a perfect place to do that, especially in a Catholic system, the system that should hold the most responsibility to foster positive reconciliation. Because again, we are that system who unfortunately had a lot of impacts, uh, towards residential schools and towards our indigenous, um, our indigenous peoples today. The issue with it being optional, um, well, the, sorry, the issue with it being optional is that people won't genuinely fully understand the course until they're in it and until all the misinformation is gone. The awareness factor needs to be there and we can, you know, do F A Qs and we can do all these things, but students won't really understand until they're there. And I didn't really understand it until I took it. But genuinely, like, I would wholeheartedly say this is the best course that we offer here in our board. Um, and then we should not be waiting for the ministry.
Trustee Chua.
We should not be waiting for the ministry because reconciliation is urgent and should be happening now.
Thank you. And sorry for interrupting you, but that's, uh, so I see, uh, trustee, uh, Saunders, you have your hand up, you're the floor.
Yeah, just, uh, to sort of reiterate, um, it's a good course. My, like I said, my daughters took it. But I'm worried that by forcing this on people when they're not ready, we're, we're going to start off on the wrong foot. This will create resentment. We will have unhappy parents. I mean, based on these emails we had, there seems to be a ground swell of people unhappy. And I think that we should take our time. This shouldn't be, uh, you know, rolled out like this. Here you go. Take it. There should be consultation beforehand. So I'll just reiterate my point. I think we're, we're risking taking what should be a very positive course and, you know, creating unnecessary resentment. Like why create, uh, it resentment when we don't need to? And I think it's an old adage, it's not like what you say, it's how you say it, or it's not what you do, it's how you do it. So I think, uh, we're risking, uh, this going the wrong way pretty quick. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Any other trustees want to speak to this? Trustee Kennedy, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Firstly, I want to say that tonight we heard that H C D S B does offer a variety of programs to recognize truth and reconciliation and indigenous, um, with Indigenous Month Awareness, Grade Nine Indigenous Art, Land Acknowledgements and Grade Eleven English, E N B to name a few. Uh, last week we heard from staff and reviewed the grade eleven survey for those participating in the M B E pilot. Uh, we didn't however, survey grade nine or ten students or their parents. I think it would have been beneficial, uh, to survey these students, um, and hear their feedback, given they are the ones that will be, uh, participating in the course over the next few years. Also, when we look at our strategic plan that's coming up tonight, one of our priorities is achieving, uh, which includes centering students as co-creators in their learning, which also includes student impact surveys. Regarding data, I'd like to review the data that we do have, which is a bit sparse. But on the last board meeting, uh, sorry, in May of twenty twenty-three, some of the data we got is that our grade eleven M B E course has been offered for, as an option for nearly up to ten years, say eight to ten years. It is offered in all schools, but doesn't run in all schools due to low student take-up. Uh, based on previous board meetings, it was stated that some of the schools have had as high as sixteen to as low as eight, to as, to none, um, choosing N B E. And with about thirty-five hundred grade eleven students, this appears to be about a two percent voluntary take-up rate for N B E, meaning ninety-eight percent of students are choosing E N G. After reading all the feedback from the survey and stakeholder emails, I see that indigenous education is valued by many respondents. And I see that the Ministry of Education has responded with significant funding for indigenous education. Uh, the ministry has not however, made N B E mandatory, firstly, a compulsory course, but instead left it to students to decide on their preferred English course. And students have chosen, um, with their course selections. They have voted ninety-eight percent in favor of having choice. Overall, there is student interest in N B E, but I wonder whether this board has done enough to educate students and participants about the benefits of N B E. Uh, have we hosted sessions through C P I or at the school level? Have we engaged stakeholders? Have we done enough to promote N B E over the last ten years? Given the low voluntary take-up, I'm not certain. Given how students have decided their grade eleven English selection over the last ten years, that being to have both options, um, I wonder why the board wouldn't continue to listen to our students. They are our customers and they have chosen, and they have chosen to have choice. So I ask why we still can't have both. Lastly, based on stakeholder feedback, I hope our board will continue to promote truth and reconciliation with history courses, N B E seminars and classroom instruction, while at the same time allowing those ninety-eight percent of students to continue to have their choice. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. With that, we have completed. All trustees have spoken. I see trustee Carabella, your hand is up, but trustee Carabella, we have, uh, you had the opportunity to speak.
I have a note. I want to make a motion to postpone.
So I gave you an opportunity to speak and I said very clearly that's your, uh, chance to, uh, speak, but I will give this to you if you make a motion. Okay, sounds good. So trustee Carabella, can you, um, let me know what exactly you're trying to do?
I would like to make a motion to postpone. I move to postpone voting on this motion and postpone the implementation of compulsory N B E three U C E for all grade eleven students at all H C D S B schools until consultation and our surveys are conducted with all grade eight, nine, ten and eleven students and their parents, um, is completed and brought back to the board of trustees.
Trustee Carabella, did you forward your motion to Elizabeth?
I didn't.
As per our bylaws, you're supposed to forward this motion to Elizabeth in, in advance, please. Can this be scanned and put on screen?
I can't.
Uh, trustee Carabella, do you have an electronic version of that?
Well, it's, it's on my other computer.
Ms. Lyndon, could you help?
Give me a minute. I can.
Trustee Carabella, you know the bylaws and you know that motions, uh, and amendments need to be presented in advance. And there's a reason why it's in the bylaws is so that we don't have delay in meeting and if all of us are just waiting around here. So, uh, because you mentioned to me earlier about this, I'm okay. But in future, kindly make sure that we present it early and my bylaws are followed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will.
Trustees, uh, this is going to take a couple of minutes. We'll take a two-minute break, quick break. Remember that. Okay. So we have the motion, uh, in front of us, trustees. Trustee Carabella has put forth a motion, uh, to amend the motion, uh, the motion on the floor. Uh, trustees can see that. Trustee Carabella, does this look, uh, right to you? Okay. So trustee Carabella moves this motion. Looking for a second, please.
I'll second it.
Trustee Saunders, seconds. Trustee Carabella, you get five minutes to talk to this, um, motion. Your time starts now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I put this motion on to postpone as I can see that, uh, some important stakeholders going forward for their future, the grade eight, who are now considering high school, grade nine, ten and eleven students, and especially their parents have not been informed, um, have not been informed and, and consulted about this, especially because it is not a mandatory, uh, course from the government. It is an option, an alternate, um, and recognizing the choice and academic goals of students and their diverse interests, what novels they like to read, um, is important. Parents know their children the best. Parents are the primary educators of their children. And this motion to postpone will give us an opportunity to, uh, get feedback from those parents, um, through C P I, parent councils, through the school email, the surveys we use, um, with maybe a direct question, so it doesn't take a lot of time and, um, you know, let, let us see the results. Now, because it's about parent engagement, I did, uh, want to read a few comments from parents that I hope will inspire us to wait and get more, uh, feedback. Well, this is says, uh, "It is difficult to see how limiting student options and removing a popular course would benefit students and improve learning. Allowing students to choose between E N G three and M B three, N B E three encourages self-determination, student engagement, academic success." "This change in the curriculum," another parent, "which will result in removing the ability of grade eleven students to have the freedom to choose between two English courses, makes no sense to me and seems quite regressive. Don't we want students to have more choice in their education rather than less? If we want students to be actively engaged in their own learning, then it is just logical to involve them as much as possible and offering students choice is therefore always the best pedagogical approach." And, and it continues, um, "I think we can agree that persevere, preserving student choice in English courses enhances the learning experience by empowering students to take ownership of their own education and to pursue the course they find most engaging." And there will be parents who will be happy to, um, respond to surveys if they know about it, if they knew this was coming. I did receive in, uh, feedback from a parent at Holy Trinity where one of the pilot project was happening. And it, he's, he mentioned it, you know, there's probably some of the feedback that we, his, um, well, he mentioned that nobody knew, uh, and was sort of blindsided. And his daughter also would have pursued and looking for an alternate English course, English A P as an option to try and find, uh, books that she wants to read and be engaged in. So I think parents are the missing, um, factor here. You know, again, we're looking at the numbers. So three, thirty-five hundred students in grade eleven, seven thousand parents, versus the, the two percent, the, the four hundred that took the course. I think that we're, we're missing a huge, a huge, uh, stakeholder feedback that's super important and that we need to base our decisions on because parents are the primary educators of their children. They know their children the best, what they're, what they're, uh, pursuing later on in university, college or the workplace, whatever pathways they've taken. I don't think, and I think this is why we need to postpone it, because it's a serious decision. English is a serious subject. We all know that and I'm not saying you don't, but I'm just emphasizing how serious it is and that parents, uh, should be engaged and asked and their voices listened to. And also those students who, um, as we've seen with the numbers, are not choosing it. So why aren't we listening to their voice as well? If they're able to get, um, the, the course content through other means, uh, other courses in our high schools and other programs. So I hope that you vote that we, I hope you can support this motion to, uh, seek community consultation from our H C D S B grade eight, nine, ten and eleven student and parents. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee, uh, Carabella. With this, I shall now open up, uh, question time, uh, three minutes question time. I have vice chair Agnew up first. Vice chair.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Carabella mentioned something about students having the option to choose which, um, books they want to read and, and which, uh, literary pieces they want to study. Can I just inquire if we provide lists in advance to students when they're doing their option sheets of what those, um, those items of sex. their option sheets of what those, those items of study will be for the following year? Are they provided with lists of what the literature will be?
Trustee Carabella.
No, I'm asking.
Superintendent Kroll.
Certainly. No, that wouldn't be common practice. And again, choice of literature may vary even in a grade 11 English course, teacher to teacher and school to school.
Vice Chair Agnew.
No, I just wanted clarity on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair, because the inference was that students will go through the option sheets and they will choose a particular course over another one because they will be looking forward, or they will be looking to have choice over the type of text or literary works that they'll be studying, and that doesn't seem to be the case. So I just wanted clarity on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I see no other hand up, so I shall open up three-minute debate. Trustees, please put your hand up if you would like to debate. And only, we can debate the time for the report. Any trustees want to? Trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We can debate only the, the time. It's, and actually, I should be a little bit clear with this motion. The motion to postpone, a motion postponed to a certain day or time, you should have put a day or time there in this motion. Trustee Carabella, so, but, but it's okay, we have it now there, it's moved, seconded, you spoke to it. So let's focus our discussion and questions solely on the time. So, I'm sorry, I just read it now. Trustee Murphy.
Just point of clarification, we're in the debate portion of it?
Okay, we are in the debate portion of it. So yes, we are going to talk about the time only, debate to the time.
Sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, my mistake. I should have focused on the, now just reading the, the motion to postpone. A motion to postpone to a certain day or time takes precedence over a motion to refer to amend to postpone indefinitely. Only the time to which the motion is postponed can be debated. So the time over here in the motion is the report coming back. So if you want to, to debate about that time, it's not about the whole motion. And my apologies, because I should have, we don't use this commonly. And so, trustee Murphy.
Yeah, sorry, I need that clarified. When you mean debate about the time, what exactly?
So the time given there is for the report coming back to the...
There's no time on that motion.
There's no fixed time, but...
We put a time then? Can we ask?
Trustees, let's go to trustees. Trustees, are you okay with putting a time there? I would prefer that it's done. We put a time there.
By which the consultation should be completed?
Yes, yes. So trustee Carabella, I think we have consent, unanimous consent. So could you work on putting a time there, please?
Yes, I would like to ask the staff what they imagine. If a digital survey goes out, maybe it takes a month to do, to have a question, and then it goes out for usually two, three weeks, and then it comes back. And then, so maybe six weeks turnaround time?
Director Klein.
I'll start off, and then I'll, sorry, who are you pointing to? Lisa? Dr. Colomore?
Dr. Colomore.
Yeah, I'd start off just in terms of the timeline on that. We have to have decisions being made in terms of course selection. We're, I've been hearing six to eight weeks. So I think there's a bit of concern around that. But, Dr. Colomore?
Through you. I would say probably about a month from start to finish in terms of, you know, developing the survey, putting it on the system platform, getting the communication ready, and then also having time to collate all that information. There are a number of grade levels and stakeholder groups involved, so I would say at least a month, maybe a little bit more. So maybe four to six weeks is a good estimate.
So trustee Carabella, the last and completed and brought back to the Board of Trustees by, can you add that?
Oh, hold on. So this is in a perfect world. Dr. Lisa is saying this in terms of nothing else around in our life. That would be, that's I'm assuming, right? So not in the context of what we're all doing already in terms of our work. Okay, I want to point that out.
So, back to you, trustee Carabella. Can you add that line there?
So it would be, I don't have my board calendar in front of me, so, pardon? May 7th? May 7th? May 7th? By the May 7th? And if I can make an amendment, I would take out the consultation, so it would just be like a survey.
So do all trustees agree to unanimously agree to, to make that friendly amendment?
See, staff might have some point to maybe clarify.
Dr. Colomore?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to also point out that we currently have the budget survey in the field, and so parents have been asked to, to participate in that, and our students are also invited to participate as well. So you, we, we need to be cognizant of that. You know, we don't want to fatigue our, our stakeholders with an additional survey at this time.
So trustee Carabella?
Yeah, I would still have it. Yeah, I mean, this is English.
Okay, and then you had, you asked another friendly amendment?
Well, to take out consultation, so just leave it surveys.
So right now, this motion has been moved and seconded. Trustees, are you okay to remove the word consultation there? I think not heard any nay, so trustee Carabella, you are okay with taking that item out? So is this motion look okay now? It's been moved and seconded. Anything else might need trustees? Okay, so we had Vice Chair Agnew speak to this motion. It, we can, trustees, we can debate only the time. So trustee Murphy, when you're speaking, you could debate the time.
Sure, sure. Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. I, I would be in favor, I am in favor of this motion. I think that we've been offering this course for nine years.
Trustee Murphy, this is the time.
I'm in favor of the timeline.
Any other trustees want to, okay, saying none, we shall take this to a recorded. Trustee Carabella, you get to close on it. Okay, I saw your hand up now, trustee.
I missed the part, are you putting a time in?
Yeah, so if you feel that the time, May 7th, is not appropriate, and you want it on May 6th, suggest May 6th, and that we can debate and discuss, and then amend it if required. So that's how the motion to postpone, you can debate only the time for the report to come back. In this particular case, trustee Carabella said May 7th.
Oh.
But if you're not satisfied in May 7th, then you want to change that to another date, then we can debate that. So with that, do you have your hand up?
How do you change it? How would you, how would you do that?
So again, it's an amendment. So we have one amendment, main motion, we have an amendment, the amendment, and then we got to vote on this and then have another amendment.
How do we debate the time if there's no time?
So again, either it's unanimous, only the time can be debated on. We can debate the content. It's moved, seconded, only the time. Okay. So with that, trustees, trustee Carabella, you get to close.
I would just close with saying, you know, I think we all appreciate our stakeholders, the students and the parents, and that this is a way of showing them that we want them to be involved in the decision-making on such an important topic as English class, not to, to allow, to let them know that they have a choice now and that they might not have a choice in what, what would be the new English class. And I think it's fair. I think it's just and fair to let parents who are the primary educators to have their say and have a visible data, visible as evidence of what their wishes would be. They are stakeholders, taxpayers, we're here for them, and I think, I would think that we could support this motion to get the best results. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. And with that, I shall call the vote. The motion is in front of us. It has been moved by trustee Carabella, seconded by trustee Sanders. Trustee Kelly, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
In favor.
Sorry. Trustee Chua?
Opposed.
Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Sudipo?
Opposed.
The Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Uhan Chanada?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Opposed.
And trustee Duarte is opposed. So we have four in favor, five opposed, no extension, motion to postpone fails. So now we come back to the main motion on the floor. Can we have that motion up? This is trustee Murphy's motion, and we had question period, we had debate time. I have a comment to make. I won't participate in the, in, in the debate, but I have a statement to make, comment, comments. First of all, I want to acknowledge and from parents that I've received emails, both in terms of concerns with the NBE3 course and emails in support of the course. Several parents and constituents have come to me and let me know that they were asked to write to us. However, it was clear that an accurate and wholesome picture of the NB3 course was not given. Folks really had no idea as to what this was all about, yet some of them spread a message or wrote to me and us. Everyone I spoke to said things like, "This is an attack on the Catholic Church. This course is anti-Catholic. This is a work agenda. We are teaching our kids about their occult and spirits, which do not make any sense." And none spoke about issues with the actual curriculum. So to parents, I'm glad that you are either present...
Point of clarification, which emails were these? Because I did not see, like, were these separate emails that you were receiving, sir?
So, as I stated, trustee Murphy, people I spoke to, this is the feedback which I got. Thank you. So, parents, I'm glad that you are either present here or watching online now that you have better understanding and have all the information. There is, there is clearly a need to increase awareness about this course in our community, and I will leave this to our director and his staff to ensure parents have accurate information that they need. In this day of widespread misinformation and disinformation, we all need to be more vigilant, and I see it as our vital role of, as trustees, to ensure that we are sharing accurate information with all stakeholders. Our guarantee to our parents and caregivers, hardened stakeholders, and school community, is that we will continue to stay laser-focused on our core competencies of education, that's reading, writing, arithmetic, and our Catholic faith, and we will strive for an excellence in Catholic education. Parents should be aware that curriculum and course changes and offerings are regular occurrences, and these are operational matters which are routinely, routinely dealt by staff. We have heard that 32-plus school boards in Ontario have changed courses, and I have not heard of any such issues in any other school board. I read the parent survey comments two times, and I fully understand concerns raised by parents. I've also, also heard from parents who have expressed strong support for the NB3 course. Staff has reviewed and taken into consideration all the feedback and will address it as appropriate. I personally have taken March break as time to read and to educate myself on the ING3 and NBE3 curriculums to understand the differences, and it is clear to me that four strands of oral communication, reading and literary, literary studies, writing and media studies are common with the, with the addition of the perspectives and text forms in Canada. The identity, relationships, self-governance, and challenges are the only difference in the NBE3 course. We have heard that the NB3 course is in perfect alignment with the Institute of Catholic Education guidelines, and the delivery will be in line with the teaching of the Catholic Church. There is no hidden agenda, or there's no work consummacy here at HCDSP, and I've heard this time and again and time and again. I stand truly and totally committed to the solidarity of our Catholic Church, the Pope Francis, the bishops of Ontario, the Institute of Catholic Education, OCSDA, the Ministry of Education, and the HCDSP to our indigenous brothers and sisters to further education on indigenous culture, heritage, and about truth and reconciliation at the HCDSP. And with that, I shall hand it over to trustee Murphy for three minutes to close, close discussion. Trustee Murphy, you're the first.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to respond to your comments about the communications that you were getting. I, there are plenty of parents who watch our meetings, and I think that to assume that they know nothing is actually kind of insulting. I know many parents who viewed the March 5th meeting, and from that meeting arose their concerns. They're not, there's no misinformation. I don't know why you get one chunk of information and then other people get different, but I just want to state that publicly. I think our parents are well able to look up the same things you spent your March break looking up. I know constituents who spent the same amount of time looking up the same things, okay? So to assume that they don't know is, is, is not fair. I think that we can agree, we all agree, it is indisputable that truth and reconciliation is indeed very important, and we want to foster sincere understanding, empathy, and respect. This can and is accomplished in many different ways and across all grades. Grade 11 English is not the only way to accomplish this task. I believe that there's, you know, as the document stated, the first slide that Superintendent Kroll showed, there is definitely a call to action to mandate truth and reconciliation throughout the curriculum from kindergarten all the way up to grade 12. So that is being done, I believe. We can always do better. I definitely agree with that. However, again, I don't believe grade 11 English is the only way to accomplish this task. And also, I'd like to reiterate that one of the main goals of a trustee is to represent the interests of constituents, and the only data I have access to is mixed, not overwhelmingly positive, did not include grade eight to 10 students or parents which stand to, you know, be affected by this decision. Therefore, I would ask my fellow trustees to consider all of this feedback, the data, and to support my motion to preserve ENG three while also offering NBE three. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. And with that, I shall call the vote on the main motion. It was moved, and trustee Murphy, seconded by trustee Carabella. Trustee? Trustee, trustee Murphy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
Opposed.
Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Sudipo?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Uhan Chanada?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
And trustee Duarte is opposed. So we have four in favor, five opposed, no extension, motion fails. We shall now move on to our next order of business, which is staff reports. We have no staff reports today. We shall now move on to item number 11, information items. 11.1, Director's Report. Director Klein, please present your report.
Do my best to read notes that are invisible to me. Thank you very much, Chair, and I would hopefully buoy people's spirits by saying that after, at 9:26, the Director's Report will be very brief and hopefully as engaging as possible. What we try and do is report on things that are timely and, and ongoing and relevant, and the theme of this, okay, this is not good, is the events that we've held over the last few weeks and days, particularly as they relate to faith development, and it's timely, of course, because we're in the season of Lent, and we're heading toward Holy Week and then the great, awesome season of Easter. An ongoing conversation that we have often is the nature of Catholic schools and the nature of what we do, and, and often we talk about budget. So I think it's not a big reminder for trustees, and I think you're more than aware of it, that we don't receive funding per se for religious education, for professional development, or the other ongoing activities in our schools from K through our high schools, to, again, reflect that we are an Easter people and that we are a people of, of the Catholic faith. So it's important to know that we do have opportunities for our staff to go to the well, as it were, to refresh themselves and to learn a little go to the well, as it were, to refresh themselves and to learn a little bit more about their faith. And so we have had over the season of Lent, opportunities for staff, sometimes teachers in their first few years, sometimes any staff that are, that are interested, opportunities for them to again reflect, to discern, to pray and to celebrate. And obviously that fits into the season of Lent very well. So a few of the highlights that we've had over the last few weeks were ones, and I would like to say that we would want to ask and thank the, the chaplains that have led many of these endeavors and also our, our head chaplain, Chu Gillian as well and Laurie for the work on this. These things don't just happen by themselves. Catching Fire, which is Igniting the Flame of Vocation, that was for, I believe, teachers in their first five years. A Lenten Retreat for anyone that was interested and available. Again, each of these was led by different chaplains. The Labyrinth is a, an opportunity that allowing people to, to pray and reflect and discern. And of course it goes back to medieval times in, in Europe and that methodical, ongoing opportunity to walk and pray and become closer with God. And of course, we had through Lent, some work in terms of Psalms and social justice. And I would just echo the fact that as a Catholic educator, I've always felt doubly blessed to be able to teach and lead Catholic schools and also have the opportunity, awesome opportunity that many Catholics, most Catholics don't have at their work site to also again pray and to experience Eucharist and experience the traditions of our faith. Other Lenten activities are again ones that are not going to be new to many of you. And they are hopefully are, they need to go above and beyond the religion programs that are in our schools throughout the grades as well. But through Lent, of course, forty days, forty Acts of Love, Think Fast, which connects with Development and Peace, Caritas International, a work that's been done probably in many of your homes too. We used to do that a lot in our house. Twenty-four fasts, which is foster, supported by the H C C F. Stations of the Cross, not this week, but into Holy Week. Again, an opportunity for our students to live out and to experience and to grow to a greater awareness of and understanding of the passion. That of course leads to the resurrection. And we wanted to highlight too that we had the interfaith council come and visit students at Saint Thomas Aquinas School. So again, fairly brief, but a good reminder for all of us here and, and outside of this building that our Catholic schools go beyond what other schools do in the province of Ontario and that they nurture the soul. They work with parents and pastors to ensure that our baptismal commitment is fully lived out. And again, we do that by the hard work and imagination and faith of our staff. And of course, by our work to ensure that they're fully budgeted. So again, brief, but hopefully something that has piqued your interest and renewed your faith in our board.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, we have questions. Okay, trustee Kennedy, you're the floor.
Yeah, just wondering if there's anything on achieving this week. I saw it in the legend at the top there, whatever, I just didn't see anything.
Sorry.
Was there, was there a part for achieving? I saw, was achieving believing belonging, is there anything on achieving that? We were, we had that we didn't for this week or not?
Director Klein, could you go up your presentation and?
Sorry, it's been over a week. The version I have doesn't have that on it, trustee Kennedy.
Director Klein? There's no information there. Trustee Kennedy?
I'm looking at the same agenda. I think I don't have that on it.
Okay, thank, thank you. Trustees, any other questions for Director Klein? Seeing none? Thank you, Director Klein, for presenting your report and your update. Item eleven point two, construction reports, Superintendent Merrick, please present your reports, Superintendent Merrick. Are you online?
Superintendent Merrick is indisposed. So I'll take the opportunity to lead us through this. What I know is a fan favorite for our meetings and has been for many months. So we're looking again at Milton three, nine and Oakville number four. And if a picture is worth a thousand words, we have a twelve thousand word report. If you look at the pictures, you'll note that there has been amazing progress done at all sites. I have a visible memory of having been with some of you just with shovel in hand and look how things have changed. We've been really blessed by weather and great conditions at all sites. And of course, we have a very good track record for moving things forward very quickly. If you look at each of these, you'll note, and I know you have looked at it, the progress that is noted for each of the sites and also the fact that there are some upcoming elements of work that is still to, still to come to pass. I've been again told by Superintendent Merrick that good progress continues on all the projects and the dates are still being held to our goals. And that if there are further questions, you can either ask me or probably these are things that we can pass on to Superintendent Merrick in terms of any of the logistics. But this is again another good news report and something that we return to an ongoing basis for our three soon to be blessed schools.
Thank you, trustees. Do we have questions for Director Klein, Superintendent Merrick, stroke Director Klein? No questions? Thank you, Director Klein, for presenting the report from Superintendent Merrick. Up next, staff reports, we have no staff reports. Information reports, eleven point three, DECA, E TAC trips. Superintendent Cordiero, please present your report.
Through you, mister, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to announce that four of our H C D S B secondary school students have progressed from the national DECA competition to the international competition that will take place in April, April twenty-fifth to May the second in Anaheim, California. Two students representing Christ the King Catholic Secondary School in Georgetown. One student from Bishop P F Reading Secondary School in Milton and one student as well from Saint Francis Xavier Catholic Secondary School, also in Milton. So those four students will be traveling with the three H C D S B staff to participate in that competition, representing our board themselves and the great programs and the student bodies that have helped them achieve these tremendous goals. We wish them all the best. The committee, the ex, the extensive trip advisory committee, or the better known as E TAC, did meet on February sixteenth. We have approved the trips. The packages that were put forward were in compliance with our board policies and administrative procedures. And in some instances, there has even been financial support by the school and through the board's Superintendent Contingency Fund to help support student travel in these circumstances. I welcome any questions, but it's a very proud moment for the students, the schools and H C D S B as a whole.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordiero. Trustees, we have questions for Superintendent Cordiero? I have one question.
Sure.
How, how can we promote this and fulfill the future? You know, we want more number of students going to these competitions.
Well, we have thriving, through you, Mr. Chair, great question. We have thriving DECA programs in each of our secondary schools. These competitions are very intense. They require a pitch, a business pitch, entrepreneurial proposal put forth by students. They go from regional competition to national competition. And if successful, they make it to the international competition, which happens here. I know that Strategic Communications has worked effectively in partnership with the schools in promoting these competitions within the board and across the province of Ontario. And I know that there have been articles, I believe most recently, the director's report of the previous board meeting did indicate the success of these schools and these students. So those are some of the ways we continue to promote, both within our H C D S B and to the larger community.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordiero. Well done there. Trustee Chua has the hand up. Trustee Chua, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This is to any superintendent or person who can answer this. One student who actually made the international competition has reached out to me with a concern regarding one of our board policies. So DECA is actually running like a Disneyland night for all of the DECA competitors. And unfortunately, our school board would be the only school board not attending just because, you know, we, I, I believe, I don't know which you got policy, but we have a policy that doesn't allow them to go on rides. Is there any possibility that we can sort of, you know, bend the rules for them? Because I don't want those three poor students just to hang out with like the two administrators while everyone else is at Disneyland having fun. Just wanted to put it out there, if anything is.
I'll pass this to Director Klein. He's the only one who can bend those rules.
I'll certainly start, but having brought little kids to Disney World before and Disneyland, I know it's not all fun for the adults. On those kids, I've seen people, children throw up on rides, children cry all through the day and you wonder why you just spent a king's ransom dragging them down to there. But that aside, we do, we do have policies on this and those are based on some of the primary, I guess, expectations around schools in terms of health and safety. But I saw that because he is close to this particular trip and I know that was noted earlier in a conversation. And I asked Superintendent Cordiero maybe weigh in in terms of how we might move forward.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Chua. I certainly understand the concerns. They, they were raised. I, I will note that we are not the only board in competition that has policies in place in this respect. But I certainly understand the disappointment in that regard. But we, we must ensure that our, the approval of our extended trips fulfill our board policies and administrative procedures. And that's, that's part of the experience, unfortunately.
Thank you, Director Klein, Superintendent Cordiero for answering that. Trustees, we have further questions? If not, thank you, Superintendent Cordiero for presenting the report. We now move on to item eleven point four, the strategic plan update. Director Klein, please present your report. Please present the update, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Chair. And I think, oh, perfect. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. We can sort of scoot down through those. I would like to first of all, convey a deep thanks to senior team. When we last tuned in, it was January and we had the the priorities and the principles and the objectives of the multi-year strategic plan shared and vetted and approved by all of us here that day. And then the next step was to look at how these would be actualized over the next four years. So. And to that end, we had all of our senior staff over several weeks work together and work with their own staffs in their different departments to look and see where those objectives could be actualized. And they are actualized through, through actions and through the use of data and the use of performance indicators. And beyond that, I, not that you want to shine a brighter light on any of the senior team, but I would have to say that with regard to this particular report, the work of Dr. Lisa Colomore and her team in research and Andrea Swindon and her team in the Strategic Communication Department is important. And you'll recall from reading this that those areas are certainly highlighted. The purpose of the report, as you're aware, is to provide you with an update on the M Y S P and including the communication plan that will guide the launch of the new M Y S P and the implementation of the monitoring strategy. They'll be used to evaluate the effectiveness of this plan on an ongoing, ongoing basis. You'll note too that the communication component of this is really highlighted in appendix A and sub appendix A one, which look at the, all the participants that will be part of communication, all the targets and also the pace and the sequence of events that's ongoing. Kind of jokingly wonder, you know, if a tree falls in the forest, did it make a sound? I guess if a M Y S P is not communicated, does it really exist? So the communication of this is really, really important. And you can see then in the appendix that we have created that there is a, a logical and thorough array of steps here that will allow everyone from principals, who of course lead each of our schools and outside of our schools too, through that, that breadth to learn more about what we're doing, not only to get things started and have traction, but also to then have an iterative type of model where people can give us feedback. And this is extremely important. And again, that is the, I guess, the responsibility of all of us. But certainly Andrea and her team have done a great job in terms of articulating that. The next part of this is the monitoring strategy. And the monitoring strategy really takes its form on appendix B. I think this would be something that in terms of the moving from the objectives that this board has identified to, okay, so what do we do with those? And how are we going to measure those? That's where we see these on those, on those pages where we have the table that we might have to turn our heads sideways to look at. And if we look at the table, we can see then in fairly clear form. And these things do evolve over the years as well as new priorities emerge from the province or here as other things evolve over four years. And we're, we're well aware of how that four years can change a lot. How those then are used in terms of having our specific objectives, actions and then data sources. And those are found in appendix B, which is really the last few pages of the, of the, of the report. So if we look at those, we can see that you would remember, obviously achieving, obviously believing and belonging, et cetera. And each of those has principles and objectives. But what you might then not have known at the time was, well, what are the actions or the operational plans or resources that would be accountable for those? You could see them on those pages, two through to six, that link directly to each of those. And those again are used when we have our reports that come from me more or less twice a year. They are referenced, of course, in reports that we have here. We see that the reports that come before you on a regular basis have those links to our priorities and our principles and our objectives. So there should be that alignment, there should be that connection to each of those. And in terms of the performance indicators, there are some that again, won't be a surprise to many of you. EQA O, whether it's grade three, six or nine or O S S L T, graduation rates and credit accumulation rates. These are all fantastic performance indicators, for instance, of some of the actions and the objectives that we have. The report is, is, is concluded with a monitoring schedule that is again proposed and is proposed with that, I guess, that humility that sometimes things get thrown off schedule. But these are some strategies that are tried and true. And again, if you look at them, you can see that there's quite a wide breadth of them and quite a bit of creativity within them as well. And some of them are strategies that we might not have had when the previous iteration of the M Y S P existed. For instance, things. when the previous iteration of the MSP existed. For instance, things like, looking here, we didn't have, we had something else back then, but the My Blueprint usage and records, we had different formats of it back five or six years ago, but not that one in particular. Student Census, of course, is something that's more relevant and ongoing over the last four years. So there's really no shortage of data. We're fairly data-rich. It's a matter of aligning it and parallling it. And then the hardest part, of course, is getting a sense of what is it, what it is telling us, per se. So really, those are the components of the report that I know you're aware of. And again, I would thank Dr. Colomore and thank Andrea Swindon for the work here and the whole team. If we have any questions, I think we'd be more than happy to address. I'm not sure if Dr. Colomore or Andrea have anything they want to add to this at this point, or we just wait. Okay, thanks for that. Thumbs up, Andrea. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Director Klein, for presenting this update. And big thank you and big shout out to staff behind the scene, Andrea and Dr. Colomore and all other senior staff for putting this together. It's a teamwork. Trustees, do we have questions for Director Klein or senior staff? Saying none. I want to thank you once again, Director Klein, and thank you to senior staff for putting this together. And I look forward to the next four years of the implementation and the monitoring of this plan. Thank you so much. Next up, we have, our next order of business is miscellaneous information. Item 12.1, Student Trustee Update. I believe student trustees have an update. Student trustees, you're the floor.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you. And through you, Chair, I will be starting off the student trustee report for tonight with the achieving section. Okay, so as you all know, we had the pleasure of welcoming our new HCDSP student trustees a couple of weeks ago for the next school year. And we're planning to formally introduce them to our General Senate tomorrow during our Senate meeting and also prepare them for their roles in the next couple of weeks. Additionally, during our Senate meeting tomorrow, we will be hearing updates from our subcommittees about their work in the past few months, especially on proposals that they've already passed, and also what they're planning for future initiatives. As for the schools this past month, as you all know, our high school students have been planning their courses for the next school years, school year. So many of our schools have been hosting course fairs that really help students to understand what their opportunities are and to make proper decisions based on that. And yeah, that's all I have. Now I'll pass it on to Trustee McGuire.
Thank you, Trustee Deepu. I will be doing the believing section of our report. So students within the HCDSP have engaged in much development within their faith throughout the Lenten season, similar to how Director Klein touched upon that in his report. Our students have been learning a lot about the aspects of faith and traditions throughout different Lenten masses held by our chaplains. We appreciate all that our chaplains do to support our faith development as students. They work so, so hard. Many students also do find that Lent is a wonderful time to connect and get to know these chaplains. So this is a really great way to promote the homeschool parish connection that makes us distinctly Catholic. Students, many of our student senators specifically are also hoping to promote the 2024 HCF 24-hour fast within our schools. It's a great way to engage students in almsgiving as well as the virtue of temperance, as it allows students to get back to their community when they see people who are in need. Fasting is also a practice that's often done within our Catholic faith and other religions. Thus, it's a great way to show students the spiritual benefits of fasting. And we will ensure to support and promote the HCCF in all of its endeavors, and we truly value all they do to help us as a board. Also, through, on that note, Ramadan Mubarak to all our Muslim students and families. We have a fulfilling season of Ramadan filled with family and faith. And I will pass on the believing section to Student Trustee Chua.
Thank you so much. So on Wednesday, February 28th, students from across the board participated in Pink Shirt Day to stand up and speak out against bullying. And I hope every single one of you wore your pink shirts. Many of our HCDSP secondary schools facilitated Pink Shirt Day themed events and ran anti-bullying announcements and events in their schools in collaboration with their school wellness teams to highlight the importance of standing up for one another and creating a belonging environment. Finally, February highlighted Black History Month. And all of our HCDSP black student unions ran awareness campaigns in their respective schools to raise awareness of the importance of Black history. Throughout the month of February, our black student unions across the board ran various activities such as Assumptions Black Joy Party, St. Francis Xavier and Bishop Redding's Black History in the Making event showcasing amazing fashion, food, poems, and dances to celebrate Black culture, and Holy Trinity's 90s-themed City's Day paired with a Space Jam-themed basketball buyout and their Black History Museum. These events help our HCDSP schools raise awareness about important topics that affect our community while underscoring the importance of creating environments where we can all belong with one another.
Thank you, student trustees. Trustees, do we have questions for our students, student trustees? Saying none, I want to thank once again our student trustees for bringing student voice to the table, and which is very much appreciated. Keep doing that. We shall now move on to item 12.2, OCSTA update. Trustee Ohan Chanada, please present your verbal report.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Very quick report this evening on Oxta. Just a reminder, the AGM is coming up May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. And at the AGM, that is where the resolutions are passed or not passed, as the motions are brought forward from all the different school boards in Ontario. So it's a very important event. So hopefully, most of our trustees can attend this event. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustees, do we have any questions for Trustee Ohan Chanada? Saying none. Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanada, for presenting your report. We shall now move on directly to, our next order of business is open question period. Director Klein, do we have any questions submitted?
None submitted, no.
Thank you, Director Klein. Our next item is in camera. We do not have to go in camera. And our next order of business is resolution regarding absentees. We have all trustees present today, so we do not need to do that. We move on to our final order of business, which is adjournment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Nobody wants to adjourn? Trustee Carrabella and Trustee Powell, seconds. Are you okay? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Saying none, motion carries. Trustee Ohan Chanada, could you please lead us in the closing prayer?
Thank you. My pleasure. Please let's make the sign of our faith. Name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Oh God, source of our light, you are ever with us to reveal the way of truth and justice. Be with us this day as we struggle to ease the burdens of our sisters and brothers. We ask this in Jesus, who is our way, our truth, and our life. Amen. Name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you for a great meeting. Good night, everybody.